I've asked Ed Weeden to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Ripley to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy keenen come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and lead us not... I'm lost in words. Heavenly Father, we just want to give you praise and glory today, Lord God, for bringing us all together as a group. We ask you to bless us individually and collectively, Father, God. We just ask you, whatever issues we have, Lord, we leave them at the door, and that the choices we make today, Lord, are based on what's good for the city, Lord, and not just what's good for everybody else, Lord. We just ask you to touch each person individually here, Lord God, bless... heal the body of those going through, Lord, any sickness and pain, any heartache, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Jeff Hodson to please introduce the members of the planning commission. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All the way to my right, in the last seat over there, that is Kay Wilson, our city attorney. And moving around, you have Jack Wall. Jack's a civil engineer, and Jack represents the Rose Hall District. Next, you have Dr. Quasny. She is a professor of literature and cultural studies, and she represents the Princess Anne District. Next, you have Don Horsley. Don's a farmer, and he is at-large. Next, you have Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and development. He is also an at-large member. Jan Rosensky, she represents the Centerville District. She is the planning commission secretary, and she is a property manager for Long and Foster. You met our chairman, Mr. Bob Thornton. Mr. Thornton is in commercial real estate sales, and he represents the Lynn Haven District. Next, you have our vice chair, Dee Oliver. Dee is a funeral director, and she is an at-large member. My name is Jeff Hodson, Jeffrey when I'm in trouble, and I represent the Beach District. The empty chair is usually held by Mike Inman, who couldn't be here with us today. He is a real estate attorney, and he is an at-large member. Next, you have David Weiner. David is in commercial sales, and he represents the Kinsville District. Next, you have David Redman. Dave is in commercial real estate, and he represents Bayside. We have our planning director, Barry Frankenfield. And Barry, if you don't mind, if you would introduce your staff.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Ed Weeden, who is our voter calculator and prayer man. So thank you very much for everything you do. On the planning bench today, we have Kevin Kemp, the zoning administrator, Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Robert Davis, a planner, Jimmy McNamara, a planner, Jonathan Sanders was there, I guess he'll be back, Tobias Eisen... Tobias Eisenlohr. All right. Michelle Coleman, and behind her, we have Dr. Stephen White. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Next order of business, the explanation of the rules we use to run the meetings. I've asked Commissioner Rosensky to review the rules.
Thank you, Chairman Thornton. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and members of this committee with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is located in the front of the planning commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there's any request for withdrawal or deferral of any item on the agenda. Consideration of these items is made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that have favorable staff recommendation and that are unopposed. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that the action taken by the commission here today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final approval or disapproval of an application is made by city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, Ron, Jeff, and Jan, for your introductions and your prayers and your pledges. The next order of business is to address those items to be withdrawn or deferred. If you have a case, please come forward for that item to be deferred.
Good afternoon, Chairman Thornton. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, on case number 10, SXCW Properties 2 on Holland Road. Unfortunately, it clicked during the discussion, the informal about the size of the property, and went back and looked. The property is four and a half acres in size, and the advertisement is only for the 2.4, that is, the car wash, the outfarce, another 2.1. So that application needs to be deferred for 30 days to be re-advertised accurately because the intent is to encumber all of the property. My client is here from Charlotte, and I also want to recognize the four folks that are here from Scarborough Square who had signed up to speak. They're aware of the deferral, and they're perfectly willing to come back next month and speak about what they wish to speak about. But they're... in the meantime, you know, some other issues that we are resolving with them, I think, will be helpful to commission everyone involved.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone here... The chair's been made aware that item number 11 is to be deferred also. Is that yours?
That's me. I didn't know if you wanted to ask if anybody...
Oh, yeah. Is there any opposition to this matter being deferred or any questions about it? Nope?
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, item number 11 is also... my clients on Ocean Bay Homes, and that's also requesting a deferral. We expect to be back on that next month as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to defer items number 10 and number 11?
So moved.
Or motion by vice chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we defer items 10 and 11.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horsley. We're now ready to vote.
Vote is open. My vote, 10 to 0. The commission has deferred items 10 and 11.
Thank you. The next items that we will address this afternoon are those items that are to be placed on our consent agenda. The vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I hope I get this right. We changed it so much at the last minute, I might miss something. I hope not. But this afternoon, we have 11 items on the consent agenda, and the first matter is item number one. And this is an application of James Grucheska, I hope I got that right, for an enlargement of a non-conforming use on the property located at 40627th Street in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this application? Would you please state your name?
James Grucheska.
And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any opposition to this application? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Hodson to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Two duplexes for a total of four dwelling units are located on this 7,000 square foot lot. City records indicate that both duplex structures on the site were built in 1946 prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. The site is zoned R5S residential district, and as such, a duplex, yet alone two duplexes, is not permitted use within the zoning district. The applicant currently lives in the first floor unit of the northern duplex, and would like to expand the square footage by approximately 136 square feet for a bathroom and a walk-in closet. The proposed improvements will be in the same footprint where a mechanical room was formerly located, preserving a 10-foot side yard setback. In order to expand the duplex footprint, the applicant requests approval for an enlargement to the non-conforming use. The proposed elevations are in keeping with the scale, proportion, and design of the existing duplex with other... and with other residential structures in the vicinity. The staff recommends approval, and the planning commission agrees, and we place it on our consent agenda. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The next matter is agenda item number four. And this is an application of Clarence E. Andorius v. Bryan, Cindy Feldman, as applicant and owner for subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations on property located at 3388 Eagle Nest Point, located in the Lynn Haven District. Hello?
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Oliver, members of the planning commission, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Bryan, properly known as 3388 Eagle Nest Point. Two conditions, and the staff write up, and we're in total agreement with those two conditions. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. McNamara for his help on this and his cooperation. He was a big help, and we really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ripley to read this into the record, please.
This is a variance for an owner that has almost two acres of land on the end of a road that is in the Little Neck area. It's a waterfront property. He wishes they're subdivided, is a house, existing house on it, and the lot was subdivided back in 1948, and they're looking to create an additional lot to build another house on it. They meet the size requirements of the ordinance. The problem is that there's a... from a zoning point of view, is the front footage is... the frontage is a little smaller than the regulation, and so that's what we're really approving here, 65 feet. As you heard Mr. Garrington handle this, and he's been through the Chesapeake Bay and has their approval, and we saw that this was a logical thing to put on the consent agenda, and so that's why it's on the consent. And staff recommends approval, and we'd wish to do the same.
Great, thank you. The next matter is agenda item number five. This is an application of Real Investment Association, Inc., incorporated. It is an application of Real Investment Association for subdivision variance, section 4.4 of the subdivision ordinance on property located at 1337 Reedtown Road, Bayside District. Hello?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Oliver. Chairman Thornton, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicants. We appreciate this item being on the consent agenda. The conditions as recommended by staff, and Robert Davis has done a nice job with this, are acceptable to my clients. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda?
My name is Dennis Johnson. I live on Reedtown Road. I noticed here in the evaluation and recommendation, it says that it's a sufficient lot that three single-family dwellings could be on it, but I see that it's supposed to be just split down into Lot A and Lot B. So can I assume that that would mean there would just be two homes, one on each lot?
Yes.
Okay. And because the frontage there, out onto the street, is kind of small, a lot of the neighbors are just concerned about the driveways, and if they would be pretty much like to the inside of the lots, or if they're going to be out bordering next to the edge of their properties?
Right. And I think that Mr. Burdon can probably answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Would be happy. Thank you.
I turned it up. Not...
Okay. We're going to let Commissioner Redman read this into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application of Real Investment Association, Inc., for subdivision variance on property located at 1337 Reedtown Road in the Bayside District. The request is to subdivide this large parcel into two lots. Each lot will contain 23,387 square feet, thereby exceeding the minimum lot requirement of 15,000 square feet. Lot A is proposed with a lot width of 68.72 feet, and Lot B is proposed with a lot width of 57.16, rather than the 100 feet required in the R15 residential district. Thus, subdivision variances to lot width are requested for both lots. When the lots are subdivided and subsequently developed, they will still be significantly larger than the surrounding properties. There is no opposition to this application. The staff recommends approval, and the commission concurs by consent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Redman. The next matter is agenda item number seven. This is an application of Mogul Properties LLC as applicant and owner for conditional rezoning, conditional B2 community business to conditional B1A limited community business on property located at 3,017 South Witch Duck Road, located in the Kimsville District. Is there a representative on this application? Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? This is Eddie's. Eddie's.
Eddie Burdon, representing the Mogul Properties LLC. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. It's proffered... a zoning that corrects an illegal 1980 conditional rezoning that didn't have... we didn't have conditional rezoning. It said you could put houses on B2, which you can't do, so we appreciate being on consent.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. The property is the location of the historic Caraway House, is now located within the Caraway House Historic and Cultural Overlay and Historic Kimsville Area Overlay District. It is believed that the house was built around 1933. The house was moved to the current site in the 1960s from its former location on the east side of Princess Anne Road. In 1980, the subject's site was rezoned from R5R residential to conditional B2 community business to allow for all uses in the R5R district plus a retail shop. The applicant now requests a rezon... to rezone the property to B1A limited community business district and enable additional uses. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes to the building. Staff has recommended approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. The next matter is agenda item number nine. This is an application of Milagros, I hope I'm not missing this up, Montisa, for a conditional use permit for an automotive repair garage on property located at 5768 Arrowhead Drive, Unit C, located in the Kimsville District. Hi, how are you?
Good, hang on.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Reagan Bozakian.
Great, thank you. And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, I totally agree with you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this in.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver.
Thank you.
The applicant requests a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage in order to operate an auto body repair shop and paint booth. During the process of obtaining a business license, it came to light that a conditional use permit is required. The applicant desires to use a unit in an existing industrial warehouse building on Arrowhead Drive. The auto repair business will operate from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. Repairs and the storage materials will occur only within the building. No changes to the exterior of the building or the site layout are proposed with this request. Staff has approved the application, recommends approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Weiner. The next matter is agenda item number 12. And this is an application of Mermaid Winery at the Beach for a conditional use permit, craft winery and assembly. Use on property located at 4401 Shore Drive, located in the Bayside District. Is there an applicant? Thank you. Could you please come up and state your name for the record?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Eichert. I'm the managing member for Mermaid Winery in Norfolk.
Great. And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Redman to read this into the record.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application of Mermaid Winery at the Beach LLC for a conditional use permit on property located at 4401 Shore Drive. In February 2017, a conditional use permit for a craft brewery was approved for this site, but was never acted upon. This applicant now proposes to renovate the property for a craft winery and full-service restaurant. Approximately 4,000 square feet of the existing building will be dedicated to a tasting and dining room. A 1,500-square-foot covered outdoor patio is also proposed along the east side of the building. The remainder of the building will be used for the manufacturing of wine, the kitchen, and storage. Consistent with the Shore Drive design guidelines, which are very stringent, by the way, the applicant is proposing upgrades to the building's facade that include repainting the building gray with dark red accents, and the addition of awnings, building planters, and benches. There is no application... there is no opposition to this application. The staff recommends approval, and who doesn't love wine? The commission approves by consent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Redman. The next matter is agenda item number D1 and D2. We're going to combine these two. These are an application of 5073 Virginia Beach Boulevard for... discontinuance, closure, and abandonment of an unimproved strip of Euclid Road, formerly Broad Street, Broad Creek Road, in the Bayside District. And D2 is an application of 5073 Virginia Beach Boulevard for a modification of conditions on property located at 5073 Virginia Beach Boulevard, also located in the Bayside District.
Chairman Thornton, Vice Chairman Oliver, Eddie Burdon, for the record, representing the applicant on these two applications. We appreciate the items being placed on the consent agenda, and very much appreciate the level of involvement that Mr. McNamara and Ms. Smith have had on this application, and think that at the end of the day, it's going to be very, very nice cleanup, additional cleanup on that part of Virginia Beach Boulevard. Appreciate also the recognition of the compromise on the new freestanding monument-style sign that will replace the spinning sign.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Wall to read both, D1 and D2. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a request for a modification of conditions for motor vehicle sales and street closure for an unimproved strip of Euclid Road. A conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales was approved for the site in December 2008. The approved site plan depicted specific vehicle display areas. At the time, staff viewed the application as an opportunity to upgrade the aesthetics of the site. The approved plan depicted an attractive building, the addition of plant material on the site, and a logical layout. Since that time, staff discovered that much of the landscaping depicted on the site plan has been removed, and that the applicant has outgrown the site as vehicles are displayed in areas not depicted on the site plan, resulting in an unorderly site. To rectify the situation, the applicant now requests a modification of the previous conditional use permit to develop a better site plan that will address many of the previous issues. Additionally, the applicant requests a closure of 5,878 square feet of Euclid Road that will be incorporated into the site to provide additional room for successful business. The submitted layout depicts street frontage landscaping along the entirety of Virginia Beach Boulevard and Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicant also intends on repairing and replanting existing interior islands that have been covered with hard surface, installing new interior islands within the new proposed display area that meets the minimum requirements, providing foundational landscaping for the existing building. The original layout depicted 5,000 square feet of display area. Now, there's proposed a total of around 21,000 square feet of display area. No changes to the existing building are proposed with this request. The applicant is amenable to the conditions of the road closure and the modifications to conditions of the motor vehicle sales, and staff recommends approval. Therefore, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
And just for the record, that is on the consent agenda with the condition modified to allow for a 10-foot sign, correct? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Wall. The next matter is agenda item D3. This is an application of Bickford of Virginia Beach LLC for a conditional rezoning, Ag 2 O2, and a conditional B2 to a conditional O2, conditional use permit, for housing for seniors and disabled persons on property located at 2625 and 2620 Princess Anne Road, and a portion of 2476 Nemo Parkway, located in the Princess Anne District.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the record, Rob Beeman, Virginia Beach attorney, here today on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to review the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on consent.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Dr. Quansey to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. This is a request for a conditional rezoning, conditional use permit in the Princess Anne District within the Historic and Cultural Overlay District. It consists of two wooded and vacant parcels and a portion of a third parcel. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with a 60-bed, 38,200-square-foot assisted living facility for seniors that will include a number of amenities that will add to the quality of life for those seniors. The facility... the parcels are zoned, a mix of O2 office district, agricultural district, and conditional B2, and a rezoning to conditional O2 office district and conditional use permit for housing for seniors is requested. The site layout depicts vehicular access to the site via a private access that currently provides ingress egress to the nearby shopping center. The existing two driveways will be along Princess Anne Road and are proposed to be... are on Princess Anne Road and are proposed to be removed. The parking lot will consist of 44 spaces, and there will be two interior courtyards within the boundaries of the building. The proposed single-story building is designed to reflect the neo-Georgian architecture of the nearby municipal center. Exterior building materials will include brick, pre-cut stone, and cement-fiber board lap siding. The facility is proposed to be open 24 hours a day, and anticipated that no more than 25 employees will be on-site at any given time. The site is in the Princess Anne Commons, Historic Princess Anne Center. Staff finds the application consistent with the vision for the area, and the planning commission places it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Quansey. The next matter is agenda item number D4 and D5. This is an application of Enclave at PABC LLC for a conditional rezoning, Ag 1 and Ag 2 agricultural to a PD H2 planned unit development, R7.5 residential on property located at 2754 North Landing Road and 2804 North Landing Road, and eastern 1.2 acres of 2808 North Landing Road located in the Princess Anne District. Also, it is an application of the Enclave of Princess Anne Home Owners Association, Incorporated, and the Enclave at PABC LLC for a modification of proffers on property located on the north side of North Landing Road, 2,700 feet west of West Neck Road, located also in the Princess Anne District.
Sorry to make you read all that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Enclave at Princess Anne BC and the association as well. Very much appreciate all of the hard work on a very complicated application from Dr. White and from all of Barry's staff, and also from Kay Wilson. Appreciate all of the efforts from Mrs. Beersy Quasny and Mr. Horsley and the rest of the commission, and very much appreciate being on the consent agenda. Want to just mention, and I appreciate you all's willingness to address this, we had put in the plans a 34-foot wide road in Phase 2 because of the change in policy, but the rest of the neighborhood has a 30-foot wide road with parking on both sides of the street, typical residential street, and we certainly appreciate your consideration of permitting that waiver to leave the streets the same size throughout the entire neighborhood so that it's consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ripley to read this into the record as I look at you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Appreciate that. This application was actually deferred last month so that the applicant could go back and address some concerns that were brought about at the commission last month concerning the density and the closeness of the setting of the homes on the properties and the open space. The applicant has done that. He's, as he's mentioned, he's asked for the waiver, and our commission has graciously decided to grant that from the 34 down to the 30 to be consistent with the rest of the development. The applicant has decreased the density from 19 down to 17, which will give more... allow for more open space. for more open space. The staff has determined that the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan along with the ITA, in the ITA planning area. The original plan was determined back in 2011. Since then, some things have changed in the plan, and some of the houses can't be built where they could have been built, one or two of them, I think. So, open space concerns and the overall density have been addressed in this application. So, the staff has determined that we are consistent with the plan, and we can approve this. We don't have any opposition today, and the Phase 2 will be consistent with Phase 1 as it was first started in 2011. So, we decided to put it on the consent agenda today. Thank the applicant for his considerations and the changes that he did make over the last month.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that was our last item on the consent agenda, and I would like to make a motion to approve Items Number 1, 4, 5, 7, 9, 12, D1, D2, D3, D4, D5.
We have a motion made by Chairman, Vice Chairman Oliver. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jan. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman.
In conflict, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I am going to abstain. I'm going to vote for the package of consent items with the caveat that I'm specifically abstaining on Item Number D3. D3, colleague of mine in the brokerage business had a hand in the real estate part of it, probably not legally required to abstain, just be on the safe side.
Okay, thank you. Any other abstentions? Okay, we are ready to vote.
The vote is open. A vote of 10 to 0. The commission has approved Items 1, 4, 5, 7, 9, 12, D1, D2, D3, D4, D5, with the abstentions so noted on D3.
Thank you. Before you all hit the road and make a lot of commotion, I'd like to thank the applicants who had a matter on the consent agenda today. They'll be scheduled for the city council meeting, and the staff will let you know when that happens. And thank you all for coming, and if there are lots of you that need to leave, we'll give you a second to get out before we start the regular hearing process.
Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Quasny has asked to make a comment on one of the cases after we voted. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to express my reservation in voting for consent for Items D4 and D5 because while the applicant works since the deferral to make some changes to the application, I still find it to be deficient in addressing some of the desires that were expressed during the planning commission meeting in June, which were a matter of reducing the number of lots to a degree that would allow for more internal open space on the development and providing more active open space throughout the development, which I think is key to new development, especially within the Princess Anne District and the transition area where open space is considered an amenity, and active open space is a manner of culture and behavior for young parents. Thank you.
Thank you. So now those that had an item on the consent agenda are welcome to stay with us and hear our regular agenda or enjoy the outdoor heat. We now like to address the remaining matters on the agenda for today, and I'd like to ask the secretary to call the first item.
Okay, the first item is Item Number 2, an application of Freedom Properties, VB LLC, for a conditional rezoning, R 15 residential, to conditional O2 office on property located on the northern side of Wolfsnare Road near the intersection of Wolfsnare Road and First Colonial Road, District 5, Lynn Haven.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Thornton. Commissioners, my name is Brad Martin. I am with American Engineering. My business address is 448 Viking Drive, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Freedom Properties. After I get over my first little bit of nervousness, I usually love coming to these kind of public hearings because I get to stand here and say we're proud of our project and we've enjoyed the opportunity to work with city staff, and we agree with almost everything we read in the staff report except for these one or two minor things. Can we hammer them out right now? Unfortunately, that is not the case today. We are proud of our project. We think we've got a great project here that's going to go on a high-traffic area of First Colonial Road. We have specific difficulty with almost everything in the staff report except for the identification of the property and the description of the project that we intend to pursue. We have a small residential piece of property that touches Wolfsnare Road. You all are familiar with it. You're familiar with Wolfsnare Road. It is currently zoned residential 15. It is sandwiched in between residential on both east and west. Let me first say that we were never expecting a full-throated endorsement for approval from the planning staff. We know that this project has challenges. It is geometrically challenged. Like I say, it sits between two residential pieces of property, and to rezone it to office does not make sense in a vacuum. What does make sense is that we are intending to rezone this property to match the rest of the property that the applicant, O.E. Burke, who is here today, owns with Freedom Properties. And all we are intending to do with this piece of property is to use it as a drive aisle, as a north-south connector. There's the more fully-featured site plan. We are intending to use it as a drive aisle to connect north-south to both the three-story medical office building that Freedom Properties is intending to build, and it's also going to serve the Aldi building just to the north of us, which does have an ingress egress easement across this property to let their drivers, their clients, out to the south. I had prepared this five-page kind of diagram handout, and it seems like these five pages address every one of the questions that I heard in the informal session, and I'd like to go through that very quickly if I can. I know you want to probably get your questions on the record, but I'll just describe the project from these diagrams very quickly. We are a triangular piece of residential property, and if you look at the first page that I handed out, you have a pink 30-foot front yard setback, you have a green drainage easement on the side, and you have an orange utility easement on the east side. And what that leaves is about 3,900 square feet of buildable area in the middle, in the white, behind the front yard setback. If somebody were to build a house and take a 3,000 or 4,000-square-foot footprint to an architect, he could certainly design a house, but not in the triangular shape that we've got here. So there's no house that can be built on this residential piece of property. It's obvious because this is a very fashionable corridor. It's a nice place to be. The fact that there's not a house there now speaks to that. We are geometrically challenged primarily up at the north end of our property, at the top of our triangle, because we do have a 20-foot drainage easement on our left side, and we've got about a 27-foot drainage easement, excuse me, a utility easement on our right side. When we hopefully rezone this property to office to serve the further-north project, what we typically have to do for both our residential neighbors to the west and to the east is provide a 20-foot landscape buffer on either side, like we've done here. Our narrowest point up here at the top is only 51 feet across. So if we try to get a 20-foot landscape buffer here and a 20-foot landscape buffer here and a 24-foot drive aisle in the middle, the math doesn't work. 64 feet is greater than 51 feet. So we can't get what we need. What we have negotiated, and we've got three residential properties to our east, what we have negotiated is we are going to get a 20-foot buffer down here and a 7-foot buffer with all of the required plantings in on the east side. Because these residential neighbors on our west back up to us and have their backyards, they are served by a driveway over here off of Wolfsnare, we are going to get the full buffer and the full width buffer in that side of the project. So we are going to have a 20-foot landscape buffer on our west side. We are going to have a 7-foot landscape buffer on our east side and a 24-foot drive aisle in between. We talk about the connectivity to the Aldi project right to our north, which, again, there is an ingress egress easement. They've got a signalized intersection where they leave their Aldi, but this is going to be a nice escape. I heard Mrs. Oliver, I think, used the term "a lovely cut-through" in the informal section, and this absolutely is, and will plan to be a cut-through from the Aldi. There's a traffic signal right up here as you leave the Aldi parking lot, but notice, if you will, that it's not a direct, and we actually have a more recent concept plan than this, it's not a direct shot. It's not a direct cut-through straight across the property. You come in off the Aldi traffic light, you have to come into the Aldi parking lot, you come down, you make another 90-degree turn, another 90-degree turn. So what I'm saying is it's not going to be a racetrack through there. It is going to be an improved cut-through, and what it is primarily going to accomplish is it's going to take traffic off of this traffic signalized intersection here at Wolfsnare and First Colonial. So we feel good about the prospects of that. Switch to the next page, and I think one of our main difficulties with the staff report is that they have evaluated this project as a suburban-area property. And what you're looking at there is the suburban-focus area of the medical corridor on First Colonial Road, and you can see where it's drawn, and you see, I should have used a different color, but you can see our little triangular property in red there. And we are just outside of the suburban-focus area of the medical corridor. We consider ourselves to be in the suburban-focus corridor, not only because the suburban-focus corridor runs along the back of our main property here, but then it cuts across this neighbor's property in a diagonal. And if you believe this planning document, what it means is these two-and-a-half residential properties are actually in the medical corridor, and we are not. We think the residential here in these three homes is a little bit misplaced, but we think it certainly that the medical corridor applies to us, and if it does, then you flip to the third page, and you look at the staff and the comprehensive plan recommendations for what's going to happen in that medical corridor. If you look at our property as something that's within that suburban-focus area of the medical corridor and not just in the suburban area, we've got to hit those three bullet points, and I apologize, I'll just read them. Priorities should be given to infill or redevelopment proposals that complement the area's medical and healthcare activities. Check. We're definitely there. Because the supportive land use and transportation services, residential and support uses that serve the needs of older adults are appropriate for this area. Check. We're absolutely there. Mr. Burke and his project already have two medical offices who are ready to sign in letters of interest to go into this building. And third, new development should include access management and cross-access between parcels to minimize impact to First Colonial Road. Check, 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 check. Lot of the stuff we heard in the informal, a lot of the stuff we've heard from staff has been we are going to add a lot of traffic to this residential street that's Wolfsnare Road. You and I and everybody has driven Wolfsnare Road. That certainly serves residential properties. That is not a residential street. That is a primary, a secondary collector in the street system. It's one of the only two east-west collectors, First Colonial, or Wolfsnare Road and up further north, Old donation, are the only two east-west connectors that connect First Colonial Road and Great Neck Road. So I don't think that can be termed a residential street. But what we are doing here is we are giving the Aldi customers and our customers, and admittedly even some folks who are going to cut through here to get to Wolfsnare, those people are going to go west on Wolfsnare anyway. We are not creating traffic. Holy cow, I'm getting ready to end up. We are not creating traffic on this end of Wolfsnare. We are giving our clients and the Aldi clients an opportunity to come here and get out on the First Colonial at a signalized intersection or avoid First Colonial altogether. If you've got somebody from the hilltop area who wants to come up Wolfsnare and get to the Aldi, their alternative is to come here on First Colonial Road, take a left turn and take a left turn into Aldi. So you've got two lefts on First Colonial Road, which you heard is already overburdened. We'd like to take that traffic up through our site, and we relieve that traffic. So I don't think we're generating traffic on Wolfsnare. I've got a couple of things to say, and I'm going to sum up.
Finish it up.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions. We are proud of our project here. We think that our project has been a little mischaracterized in the staff report. We certainly do appreciate working with staff, but obviously there is a difference of opinion here. We are proud of the potential for this project. We don't think it provides the problems that you've read about in your staff report, and we are certainly excited to get this project going. One question during the informal was, is the project to the north going to move ahead without this? It absolutely is. Mr. Burke and Freedom Properties own the property. They are going to pursue the medical office building with or without this. So I'll let you hear from him now. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to stand by for questions.
Any questions of the speaker, Ron?
Brad, the landscaping you mentioned, there was some discussion about not building trees over top of the drainage structures, et cetera.
Right.
Plant, the planting species that you're looking at or have talked to staff, what are they?
We've talked about some Leyland cypress. We were asked not to specifically identify those, but if I can, I'm glad you brought that up because there was a question about planting trees right on top of the pipes, and we are sensitive to public works, operations, desire that we don't plant in the landscape easement. On this first page and on the fifth page here, I've actually put that storm pipe, that is that brown line that I call out as a public storm pipe, there. And what's important is where that public storm pipe goes, there is the 20-foot drainage easement on our property, but there is also a 15-foot drainage easement on the residential properties. So that storm pipe actually leaves our property and goes into the neighbor's property there and then comes back onto our property. So we are going to be in a very similar situation as the Aldi just to the north if you go to the, so we, first of all, we feel like we've planted our trees, we've shown our trees as far away from that storm pipe as possible. We certainly understand that in the future there are maintenance issues, there might be a challenge with that, but you heard that we were ready to proffer something different. You see the same situation with the Aldi on Page 5, which wasn't approved two years ago, it wasn't approved 10 years ago, it was approved last month, and it is going to construction and demolition right now. That storm pipe is also in brown. That's a bigger storm pipe than what we've got, and you can see what the approved landscaping plan there did. They've got 29 trees clustered all over that pipe. So if this is a problem for this site, I hate to do this because I don't want to muck up somebody else's project, somebody else's approvals. If it wasn't a problem for the Aldi, why is it a problem for us? That's the approved site plan from the Aldi. And you can see that they showed the 15-foot building setback and landscape buffer. They could have, the back of their building is about 80 or 100 feet away. They could have shown that buffer anywhere in their property. They clustered those 29 trees everywhere, all around that pipe. So I'm curious, if it wasn't a problem for Aldi in June, why is it a problem for Freedom Investments in July?
But I thought I heard there was a discussion where you might not put trees, and if you gained approval, that you wouldn't put trees that would, could conflict with the pipe, that it would be another species. That was my question.
To be sensitive to the neighbors behind us, the residential neighbors behind us, this is the exhibit that Mr. Burke went to the neighbors with. I don't want to show up either in construction or with approved plans or go back to them and say, oh, we're going to do is plant little boxwoods. We need the screening for those backyards, I think. The idea that we don't plant landscaping in the buffer is clearly not something that is a hard and fast rule. We will be happy to talk about whatever types of buffering trees and buffering shrubs we want to do. I don't want to, Mr. Burke doesn't want to go back to those neighbors and said, well, this is what we showed you with a nice lush buffer, but all we're going to do is little bushes now because Public Works Operations wants to plan for removal and replacement of their storm pipes in 17 years. So.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, Dave?
Why does there have to be a cross-access with Aldis?
Already granted.
I haven't heard that. Why, nobody's really said why there has to be one.
You bet. I am not a traffic engineer. The cross- The cross-access with Aldi, actually, and there are two existing, can we go to the overhead aerial picture, please? The short answer to your question is, is the easements are there, and we have access over the Aldi property, and they have access over us. Thank you very much. Here's where the Aldi is going to be. Right now, you've got a traffic signal at this intersection. The cross-access benefits our two existing office buildings greatly, because they wind around behind the, the church, and they can take a left and go northbound on First Colonial. That's what the benefit is to us, is with the church and the proposed Aldi, these customers, if they want to go north on First Colonial, they don't have to come out here, come down to the intersection, muck that intersection up more, make a U-turn, and come back north. So our, our current clients, our future clients, can go through the Aldi parking lot and get a north on First Colonial. I think what the traffic for the Aldi is, the Aldi easement across us comes here, and it comes out to our entrance. And once there's an easement there, we can re, once there's an easement, we can relocate the direction of that easement, but we can't blockade it. So if somebody, I don't know how many Aldi customers are going to be going north, but that will be a left turn at a signalized intersection to go north. If there's a stack of 20 cars here, Mr. Weiner, there might be somebody who is parked on this side of their parking lot who just says, "Ooh, I'm just going to scoot out here, and we're going to have an entrance here on First Colonial, and I want to go south on First Colonial and get out of here." Or, "I want to get out of here, and I want to go through here, and I want to go west on Wolf's Snare." So there are reasons, if, if there's a stack of cars there waiting to take a left turn at the signalized intersection, there's a reason for somebody going south or west to come through our property and do that. So we can't blockade that easement.
So it doesn't belong to you, then?
The, the rights of the easement are for them over us, and conversely, for us over them. So neither one of us can blockade those easement rights.
Okay. Are, are there any suggestions or any thoughts about making this a right-in, right-out at Wolf's Snare?
With, without a, a medianed Wolf's Snare, which will stop people from making a left-in or stop people from making a left-out, I, I don't think there's much to talk about just, just being a, if, if you paint some chevroning on the road and, and try to keep people from left-turning, they're going to drive over that. I, I don't know that Wolf's Snare would handle a median there, which is what it would take to make this a right-in, right-out.
Like a curb cut. They'll still drive over that.
Right.
Other questions? I've got one. On your proposed plan, there's an, an entrance on First Colonial to the office building. Is that new, or is that in the same place that the existing one is?
The, the existing one sits a little north of where the new one is going to be.
So you're moving it?
We are moving it down.
Okay.
A little bit, a little further from the signal.
So you'll have a right-in, right-out on First Colonial, and so will Aldi, or is Aldi limited to the light in and out?
Aldi has the traffic light. I wouldn't say they're limited to the light, because you can certainly do right on.
They don't have another one in addition to the light.
No, that's correct. It'd be, it'd be too close.
You've got this one. Those are the two ways that you and Aldi are going to get out onto First Colonial.
Correct.
Depending on which way you're going.
Correct.
David Redman.
Mr. Martin, just tell me a little bit about the, I'm, I'm curious about the, the medical office building site. It has zoning.
Yes, sir.
You can develop that by right, or rather, the applicant can develop that by right?
We will develop that by right. We, we will build something close to this. Like I say, we've, we've refined this layout. They are working with Baskerville Architects up in Richmond to, to really put a nice building together. We are going to have a three-story medical office building with about 45,000 square feet and about 200 parking spaces on this site. You can see that with or without this rezoning, we can simply round this curve, and then we've got a less attractive, less desirable project, because we are restricted to one access.
On First Colonial Road?
Correct. Putting, putting more traffic onto an already overburdened road versus, you read in your staff reports, Wolf's Snare is only at about less than half of their capacity.
All right, thank you.
Dave, Oliver?
Brad, but, but that's been an existing two office buildings for as long as I can remember. Correct.
True, absolutely.
Correct. So they've, so, so it's, it's not as if the buildings and, that the offices haven't always, they've always been there. This is just new buildings, probably more, more offices, but they've always used that right-in, right-out.
The, the right-in, right-out.
With the exception of illegally using the, the back, the back cut-through.
But importantly, OE, there's.
Because you're taking, are you taking away the front building? Because there was two buildings.
The front building goes away? The, both existing buildings go away.
Right.
And there's about 20, there's about 22,000 square feet of office space. 22,000, OE?
Right.
In that. So we are about doubling the capacity in terms of office space. We're going from 22,000 to 45,000. So.
But it's, but I guess my statement has always been that it, it's always been an office building there, too, actually, and it's always been a right-in, right-out. So it's not anything different.
Oh, right. We're, we're not concerned at all about the, the minor modifications to this. I mean, that, that's going to remain an entrance. There's, there are going to be people who leave our site and, or cut through from the Aldi.
Right.
And go right and southbound on First Colonial Road.
But that's always been your.
Oh, absolutely.
Your entrance and your exit to that piece of property.
With, with, with.
With the illegal cut-through.
Additional access. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Brad?
Okay, our next speaker is OE Burke.
Because we have a full agenda today, keep a close.
I'll be brief, no problem. Good afternoon, Chairman Thornton, Vice Chairman Oliver, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I think Brad Martin summed it up really well. I just wanted to get up and, and say hi and introduce myself and say, I think it's.
Get your name for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is OE Burke, and I'm the president of Freedom Investments and Freedom Properties. VB is our subsidiary that owns this particular piece of property, and I'm an owner of this property. We are, and one thing that's important to me to point out is, is we're neighbors here, too. So we live here and work here. If I can, if I can use your pointer for a moment. Our office is, there's this thing, okay. There we go. Our office is, and has been for almost 14 years now, in this building right here. So I, I work here every day. I come in and out of this office building every day. I see First Colonial traffic, I see Wolf's Snare traffic. We also own this building immediately adjacent to our south. It's important to me to be a good neighbor. So we have started meeting with these folks earlier in the year, it's been a couple of months even prior to this, as we were putting plans together to redevelop this property. We just acquired these adjacent facilities last fall, and now we're on a mission to clean them up, frankly. We're trying to make what's there nicer and more accessible and more safe. So one of my primary goals in meeting with the neighbors to our west has been to enhance the buffer that is not there right now. You know, what we have in, in office-zoned land that backs right up to their properties, there is no buffer here. What we're trying to create is a nicer product here that includes a new and enhanced buffer to our western boundary. So we've heard a few different ideas thrown out there about changing the types of plantings on the western boundary. Frankly, it'd be easier for us to say, "Sure, great, you know, whatever helps get us approved." I don't want to do that. I want the plantings on our western boundary. I want to be a good neighbor. I want to be true to my word, and I've given word to our neighbor that when we develop this, there'll be a nicer screening there than there is today. We're going to enhance what's behind their property. It's also important to note, two neighbors to the east, who in theory would be, you know, very impacted by this. There are three homes here. These two homes that both have Wolf's Snare addresses, those neighbors have, we've met with since February, and they've actually both written letters in support of our project. So as we talk about effects of Wolf's Snare Road, the two neighbors who actually live on Wolf's Snare Road are in support of our project. The neighbors to our west on Glenfield Court, six properties that have bought us great people, we've had the opportunity to interact with them as well, and in fact, one is here today. We want to be good neighbors to them. So we're excited about our project. We appreciate your consideration. I'm here available to answer any questions.
Mr. Gordon.
Jeff?
Have you met with the homeowners that are on the south side of the street?
No, sir, I have not. My, my initial, you know, I'm glad you said that. My initial thought was, I wanted to meet everyone that touched us, that literally abutted our property, and we've accomplished that. Frankly, I never thought, I thought the, the idea of having development around the homes would be the concern. I didn't think the traffic would even be a rub at all. So it, it did not occur to me to meet with folks across the street, and I'm, I most certainly will do that. Because again, being a neighbor is, is of high concern to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Burke? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one speaker in opposition, and that's Jennifer Archer. As you come to the podium, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Jennifer Archer. I live on Glenfield Court, 904 Glenfield Court. I'm a neighbor to the west. It's my backyard that would be impacted by.
May I keep you close to the mic, please?
I'm sorry, because I'm really congested. So I'm a neighbor to the west. It's my backyard that would be.
Could you use a pointer?
Yes. This would be my backyard. I'm the second house. Okay. Right here, this is my backyard. I, I wrote a letter in opposition. I, we've talked with Mr. Burke, and, and I appreciate what he talked about when we discussed the buffer. And in talking with him today, I feel a lot better about his ideas about a, a buffer and, and not going forward without large plantings, because the idea of nothing being there between us and a road is disgusting to me. But hearing the idea that we're not suburban, and it's not a residence or residential area, I don't know, is upsetting. But the traffic does bother me, and the, the amount of traffic that's on Wolf's Snare now, I, I don't know when this traffic study was done, but there's a, a ton of people that, that come around that corner very fast from First Colonial to avoid traffic. There's a ton of people that go in that back lane to cut around the light. If you've lived in that area, you know that that cut-through is there. People go in that back lane all the time. So when it is connected to Aldies in that parking lot, a, a lot of people will use it. But as long as there is a buffer there, that's more acceptable to me. I understand that change happens, and our area is developing and changing, and I understand that. I can accept whatever comes our way, but something needs to be there to protect my investment, which is my home, between us and, and a road, and that's all.
Any questions of Ms. Archer? Ron?
Yeah, Ms. Archer, thanks for coming down. The, I think the buffer, as you mentioned, is critical also. But my question is, was that cut-through there when you bought the house?
It was. We, it had just kind of got through. We moved in in 2008, and, but it wasn't really a use. And funny, I actually looked it up, and it was not like a zoned, it wasn't actually an approved thing. So I didn't think actually people used it. I thought, and because it was residential, I thought it went to someone's house. I didn't realize it would be for those office buildings. So I looked it up before purchasing our property, and because it said residential, I thought it went to someone's house. And then, when we moved in, seeing all the traffic, I was like, uh, this isn't exactly what I thought it would be used for. But, you know, it wasn't as bad, but as time has increased, realizing that, oh, on a, on a Thursday afternoon, a UPS truck can go by at 20 miles an hour. On, on a Saturday at 7:00, people are walking back there all the time. Kids could be walking back there, and cars can be going by. And it could be 10 o'clock at night, or 8 o'clock in the morning. If I'm watering my plants on my deck, I'm very visible. I think that city planning people were taking their, you know, out on the bus, and I was like watering my plants on my back deck, and I'm like, oh, I'm still in my pajamas. And very visible.
Was the bamboo there when you moved there?
Yes.
Because it's pretty thick.
Because that's the property that's to the east of that lane. That's their bamboo, yeah. So it was, it's very private. I, in a conversation I had with.
Nothing behind.
Mr. Burke, I was like, we liked it, because it was, it's very private, it's very green. You know, the, the bamboo is there, it's.
It's very thick.
Yeah. So you don't see anything. And there's a, you know, a green space, which will now be a three-story office building. So it was very private. Even though that was zoned office, there, there isn't an office. You know, the office buildings are way in the distance, there's lots of trees. We had a huge oak in our yard that ended up getting struck by lightning, we had to take down, so then we were like, we're just really exposed, because our house kind of sits up on the property, and, you know, obviously, we lost some screening, but that bamboo was always there. And there was just a lot of stuff there, but, you know, it's just, it was very private, and we're losing that privacy if that road is then there. And there's lots of office buildings, and people are cutting through to go to a grocery store at all times of the day. And people are avoiding the light at First Colonial to cut through, and people inherently are not going to be going 10 miles an hour. They're going to be doing 15, 20 miles an hour.
Thank you.
A question, Dave?
You have bamboo? I don't remember seeing bamboo on your side.
It's not on our side, it's on the other side.
It's on the other side.
Right.
On the east side of the road. So you don't have, you have.
No, we don't have it.
You have the white vinyl fence?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no screening. I just want to make sure I remember the correct house.
Right. So Mr. Burke, that's when we had talked to Mr. Burke, and he was like, well, he's going to put up nice, big, 20-foot, you know, the appropriate residential buffer between us and whatever he builds. And that's when, when he told me to, that today, that it had been proposed to not, to put in, you know, three-foot boxwoods. It's scary.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Archer? Mike?
Can you go back to the plat and show the, so I can have the speaker point out once again exactly which lot is.
Second one back.
Okay. So it's next to the red, next to the rezoned.
You're the second house.
Yeah.
It's 904 is the address. You can see it on.
904, so.
904. On the, on the drawing.
This is me, right here.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers.
Okay, would the applicant like some time for rebuttal?
Not a rebuttal. It sounds like we're on the exact same page with Jen when it comes to the landscape buffering, and those, those, that's one of the two main issues, is the landscape buffering. I think I've given you the opportunity to see that we can plant this landscape buffering in the easement and avoid the pipe, which is critical. I, I'm sensitive to Public Works Operations. I know what they have to do on a daily basis. I think we can get the landscaping accomplished without infringing on the pipe. The other thing is, quite frankly, the traffic. The traffic heading west on Wolf's Snare is going to be there anyway, whether it comes out onto First Colonial and turns right onto Wolf's Snare to head west, or whether it cuts through this parking lot, our parking lot from the Aldi parking lot, however they're coming, and gets out there. That traffic is going to be there anyway. So I don't, except for the few residential homes between us and First Colonial, this is, I don't think this is going to be a traffic increase in any way, shape, manner, or form, because that traffic is still going to come out, and if they want to head west on Wolf's Snare, they're going to come down to the light here, First Colonial and Wolf's Snare, and they're going to go west. That traffic west of us on Wolf's Snare is still going to be there. So again, we are proud of this project. We really appreciate you, the work that you put in and the work the staff puts in. Look forward to your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, we will close the public hearing and we'll open up discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody have any thoughts, ideas to share with the group?
I have
Jan?
I have two, two things that are a little concerned to me. One is the traffic. Because Wolfsnare takes that curve right there, you know, and people getting, you know, just the competition from the cars and foot traffic. I don't know that there's much foot traffic that would walk through there with that. But I have a concern with that. And then I also have a concern because I thought I understood that there wasn't enough space to be able to put the type of buffer they're talking about on the property line without it affecting the piping that's there.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the understanding we have. There's not enough room for both to protect the pipe and still provide, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. And still provide the adequate landscaping that's called for. Outside of the easement, it should be outside of the easement.
So we cannot give the people who back up to that the assurance that they're going to get the kind of buffer that the applicant would like to put in because there's not enough space to do that in? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Robert this question. I think in the early meeting that they had indicated that they would proffer putting in the landscaping that would be, I don't know, we get as far as category four. But if it had to come out because of maintenance, they would take it out and put it back at their expense. Is that, was that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's strictly, if it's prohibited by ordinance or statute or whatever and they cannot put it in there, that doesn't matter. But if the city would let them landscape it and at their expense, if they had to take it out and put it back, they would do that. So it seems like there's an answer to the screening. It can go on the easement and it's their cost to take it out and get it out of the way if the city had to maintain it. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Generally speaking, yes, that's correct. However, in an emergency situation, we would not wait for the applicant to mobilize a crew and remove that. We would get in there and do that.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
I have a question for staff also. Why can't we know that before we vote on this application? Why can't we, in other words, why can't you determine, while we're speculating, can we put the landscaping in? Is it going to be allowed? Is it not going to be allowed? Why can't we find out whether it's going to be allowed?
Well, what our public works operation folks have told us is that shrubs would be permitted within the easement as long as they are off the pipe. And we would determine exactly that location during final site plan review.
I don't know that everybody who's concerned about this is happy about shrubs versus trees versus, I mean, what?
Their policy is no plants, period. So as a compromise, they are willing to allow shrubs in this situation to provide the neighbors some form of buffer. And it could be shrubs that grow as tall as 18, 20 feet tall, like a pitasporum or
Kind of like a tree to me.
It's technically a shrub. So we just don't know exactly what the species will be.
Mr. Chairman. Barry?
I will personally volunteer to guarantee that if you approve this, an appropriate buffer will be installed. All right?
Being a landscape architect
Yes, I think I can figure that out.
Speak with a thought.
All right, and so if it's trees, shrubs, whatever, the pipe, I'm sure we can work it out.
And in your opinion, things can go in there that grow tall that won't destroy that pipe?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Mike? Dave?
I think we're way overthinking this application. I think there was probably a misperception this morning that this is to rezone a site to build an office building and that therefore there would be a whole bunch of new traffic and all that. It really is just about this small piece of property. And I still cannot understand why. Well, first off, I understand, I think, there's nothing in the code that says you can't plant in this landscape buffer. It's merely a policy. But it's a policy that's not terribly consistent because if this is what Aldi's landscape plan is, there's an awful lot of plantings that are within that, within that drainage easement. So, I mean, it seems to me that it clearly is something that can be done with care and creativity and that would work. And I have no doubt that making this plan were, would benefit all of these sites that are above it and traffic on First Colonial Road. I mean, I just simply would make an awful lot more sense for site design. And I do think that concern, ladies, her very real concerns about buffering can be addressed because they were addressed to the property to the north. So, I mean, I just think it has to take that kind of care and that kind of creativity. I think that can, that can work and it'll make the site work better and First Colonial Road work better. And that's a tough place to be.
Dee, question?
We had a couple of questions. Well, I guess Barry's committed to the landscaping now, so I guess that's no longer a question.
I just wanted to take, I wanted to take that out.
You want to take that off the table? Understood.
I think it's something we can resolve.
I think that the bigger issue here is, granted, I totally appreciate her being exposed because on the banter we did, her house is extremely exposed to this dirt gravel road. It's not supposed to be there to begin with. My two concerns is, is that the fact that the city staff has denied this, what, in '81, '83, and '91? This has continually come back. City staff denies it. It is something that we, you know, I give, I give a lot of merit to when they come forward and they have reasons for that. There's a reason being that this, this road is not supposed to be there. I've used it on many occasions because my pediatrician was back there. I have two businesses off a Regency past that. And so we divert our traffic through there because of Hilltop, the way it is. Unfortunately, you know, the businesses are at the mercy of the traffic that's on First Colonial, as is now. And I don't think that opening this road, rezoning it to impact the neighborhood, Wolfsnare Road, is the right thing to do. I just don't. I understand Commissioner Redman that you don't think it's that much of an impact, but I travel that road all the time. I have two businesses that use that road. And it is, it is huge. There's a lot of traffic on Wolfsnare. There's a lot of traffic cutting through Regency apartments. And I think it's going to increase it with that grocery store having a cut through to that. If you didn't have that easement in between Aldi's and the office park, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but you do. And I think that, that the people in the grocery store are going to use it on a regular basis. And I just, I think that with staff would prefer not to see this go through. I really, I put a lot of weight into that.
Other comments? Mike, again?
I heard Mr. Martin characterize Wolfsnare as a collector road, or I think that was the correct term that he, he used. You know, it is and it isn't. It's a very wide road, but it's not like Old Nation Parkway. And there are houses that face onto Wolfsnare, unlike Old Nation Parkway. So it certainly is a residential road, residential street. But in a way, it does, connector, I guess is the correct term. It does connect one of the primary connections between First Colonial and Great Neck. So in that sense, it is. And it's wider than normal right away. The other concern is, the cars coming out onto Wolfsnare can turn left or they can turn right. Now, you know, the focus has been on, well, there'll be right turns going, trying to go west. Well, there could be people also coming out and they want to go east. And then they're going to go up to the light. And what impact is that going to have on that light in terms of cycling and the backups that we experience on First Colonial Road? I mean, you know, Mr. Martin argues that, well, people are going to come out on the, if they want to go west, they can't get out here, they're going to come out and they're going to turn right and go down Wolfsnare Road. Well, maybe they will. Maybe they'll make another stop in Hilltop. Maybe they're going to go down Virginia Beach Boulevard. But, you know, he does have somewhat of a point on that. Also, people coming out at night will be having headlights on the houses across the street, which they're not necessarily used to seeing on a regular basis. So there's just a lot of factors in play here as far as invading a neighborhood for the benefit of, of commercial development. So I, anyway, it's a tough call.
Jeff?
Just to tag on what Dee said, this is what I'm wrestling with, you know, where it was denied in '81, '83, '91, and now it's recommended for denial in 2017. You know, if it was just recommended for denial in '81, I could say, hey, they got, maybe got it wrong. But the chances of them getting it wrong in all three of those past years and 2017, and it says the reasons was incompatibility with the adjacent residential uses. Well, what has changed right there to make it now so that it shouldn't be? That's what I, what has changed to allow it to go through now? That wasn't there for these last three times?
Ron, and then Jan?
I think what probably has changed is that we're kind of looking at this, this suburban focus area where before, I don't think we were. And I think the patterns, you know, it's, it's a conflict between the residential and the, and the commercial always. And we have people that have bought next to commercial. And it's always that, we have to try to mitigate that. You know, I think, you know, the fact that it does now kind of lay in the suburban focus area, it kind of, to me, I keep looking at these properties and they tend to, they tend to want to be massed together. And this tends to be part of it, the way I see it. And I think, I think Brad's correct. I think anybody that's leaving, you know, Aldi's or this office building that wants to go down Wolfsnare is going to, going to go west. You're going to get that traffic whether you want it or not. It's going to go that way. How else could it go? I mean, if it's going some other place, that's, that's not the story. But if it's heading west, it's going to run down Wolfsnare, it's going to go that way. If I'm in Aldi's, I think the, he's got, they're going to have far superior stacking lanes than you will here. If I'm in Aldi's, I think I want to go out that traffic light because it's going to be more, it's going to be a better pattern. And I doubt I'm going to go meandering through the office building to get over to Wolfsnare. I mean, some people will do that, I'm sure. If you live back in the neighborhood, that's probably where, what you might do. It's a tough one, I know. I'm inclined to support it because I think it just kind of fits right. And I think it fits within the suburban focus area. And I think you probably, these other two properties to, to the east are going to probably want to go this way too, I would guess. And I don't see how you're going to use this piece of land otherwise. What are you going to do with it? It's a very odd shaped piece of dirt. So I tend to support this.
Don?
I think she was first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jan?
And that's part of what I, I was wondering is, so that if this particular piece of property changes from residential to use to be rezoned for office, then are we setting up a possible precedence for the other properties there on Wolfsnare, which is residential, to then think, okay, let's go in and submit an application to become office space also? And then we're putting office space in a residential zone? If we change, if we change the zoning on this particular piece of property?
Well, I, I will comment on that. On the corner, there is an office building. Across the street, there's a 7-Eleven. So if we, if we, and as the applicant has stated, they're going to, about right, they're going to build a building there. And in front of them on First Colonial are three office buildings already. So as Ron said, that little area has changed. There's an Aldi replacing a church. There's a 45,000-foot office building replacing two 20s. There are three office buildings or condos or some configuration already out on First Colonial. On the corner, there's an office building. On the opposite corner, there's a 7-Eleven. So the lots that are between this proposed road and the back of the building up on First Colonial, the logical thing to do with that is to take it out of residential and put it into some sort of commercial or office use. And that's why part of this is in the SFA and part of it isn't. And I suspect that's just, it hadn't matured to that point yet, but...
But then that changes the structure and the layout of, of an area that was, is zoned residential. Because you have, you know, you have three lots before you get to the, the office space on the corner.
I understand. And that happens on busy roads. Residential parcels that were on Princess Anne Road are now Wendy's. I mean, that's part of the evolution of cities that grow from residential to commercial. And this is an area that's not unlike a lot of other areas in the city. But I don't think we set a precedence because whoever develops those has to come back before this board and city council and convince two bodies that whatever they want is reasonable within the realm of the comp plan. So it's not like it's automatic. Don?
Well, you know, I look at it in a little, little bit different way. I think the, the commercial development is fine, but if we do nothing, the road is going to stay there. People continue to use it, and as Oliver says, she's been using it for years. The lady with no buffering won't have any buffering. At least if we go ahead and approve this, let it get improved, we get buffering there and it'll be put in a, in a better, better state, I think, I think everybody will be, will be benefiting. I think the lady will have her, have her buffer from the street, which isn't going to go away. It's going, it's going to stay there in some way, shape, or form. And, and the development, I don't have any problem with the development of the office building there.
Okay, you first, ladies first, and then Jeff, and Dave.
So if, let's just speculate that this corner gets redeveloped into office, which is fine, but we're not talking about putting an office building here. We're talking about actually paving a road behind residential area, which it didn't even occur to me. It was one thing for me to take a sick child to the pediatrician once a month, but until she started talking about an up truck going through, that's a whole nother different animal going through her backyard. If this application, and correct me if I am mistaken, gets denied, they have to close that road. That road is not being used.
That is correct. The use of that road would be a violation on a residentially zoned property.
Thank you. So that just sort of takes the buffering sort of out of the mix and protects her house. This is, it's not a building being built. It's, it's an actual paved road that's 25 miles an hour that's getting to be used as a cut through behind with trucks and grocery stores. And the grocery store hours are going to be considerably different than what the office hours are. Office hours are, doctor's hours are maybe nine to five. Grocery stores are eight to, Aldi's, I think, is open till 10 or 11. That's headlights going through behind those people's houses, headlights in the houses across the street. That's a, that is a, an affecting the quality of life under that residential area. Traffic or no, it's just affecting the quality of life. You know, that's where I am.
Kevin answered my question. And it was, because I was curious about what Don asked. I was under the impression that if it was denied, that road would have to be closed. Okay, that was all, but you answered that.
I wasn't under that impression.
Jack? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Doesn't matter. I'll go ahead. Yeah, and I thought that Mr. Martin brought up some great, great points about the, you know, it is shown in the medical corridor and that it is a collector, kind of collector street, Wolfsnare, Wolfsnare Road. But it is still residential. And, you know, on both sides. And even though one side, there's, there's two existing property owners, you know, appear to be in support of it, you know, it still would be splitting, you know, existing residential. And, you know, there has been denials in the past, you know, probably for the very same reason. So I'm, yeah, I'd have a hard time supporting it.
David?
I'm still stuck on this cross access with Aldi's. I don't, don't understand why that can't be closed off. If that can be closed off, then, because there's no traffic coming over there from now, from now because of the church. When the church was even active, I'm sure there wasn't that much traffic. When office building is there, it's not that much traffic. I mean, personally, if that access could go away, I wouldn't have a problem with, with this. With just the medical office building for that access onto Wolfsnare, that's fine. But as long as that cross access is with going to Aldi's, I can't support it.
Mike? I'm relatively confident that we'd find that the cross access is a recorded easement cross ingress egress. And people are relying on that being there. And it would be very, it's really not up to the city to control that access at this point.
Any other comments?
Want a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
No second?
Second.
Second by Dave.
Ron, motion, and Redman seconded?
Yes, correct.
Vote is open. My vote is seven against. For yes, the application has been denied.
Please call the next item.
The next item is item number three. The next item is item number three. An application of Franklin Johnson, Johnston Group Management and Development, LLC for conditional rezoning, R-15 residential to conditional A-24 apartment on property located at 5900 Wesleyan Drive, District Four, Bayside.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's RJ Nutter. I'm an attorney, represent the applicant. Happy to be here today. First, I want to thank you for, I mean, before we got into this room, we were on consent, and I appreciate your indulgence there. What a difference 100 foot makes between that room and this room. But I did want to tell you a little bit about the application, and I'll also talk about some of the opposition questions because we've been able to, to address some of those with the people who are here today in opposition. So first, this is an application to rezone a piece of property that's owned by Virginia Wesleyan. During the informal session, you heard the talk about how they've changed the location, official location of the university, that they've changed to a university status now. Part of that is a requirement that they have a graduate program. And the graduate program, they started earlier, actually earlier this year. And this was an attempt by them to look at a housing component focused on their graduate students or, and other free market, and people in the marketplace in general. They have housing today, on, on the campus today for their students. They plan additional housing for those students. In fact, their board admonished us in this process not to compete with them on student housing. They wanted the students, undergraduate students, to live on campus to the best extent possible. And they'll be building additional housing units for that purpose. So, so having said that, what they did is they then went out for a search committee, and they actually interviewed 11 different developers of multifamily projects. And Franklin Johnson was, was lucky enough to be selected by them because of their reputation and a number of other factors. They apparently, unknown to me and known only to them, for why they selected Franklin Johnson. But with that, we then embarked on an effort to design this in a way that the staff and the university wanted. And that was to do everything we could to protect the adjacent residential property, L&amp;J Gardens. L&amp;J Gardens has a wonderful history, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and we did everything we've done designing this to keep it away from, from L&amp;J Gardens. To that extent, we moved all the buildings, all the four-story buildings up along the right-of-way, along a common path. We agreed with the university with a common scheme of fencing that the university would be putting up along its portion of Wesleyan Drive, and also putting along Baker Road as well. We agreed to pull all these things up, put the parking behind those buildings. We agreed that the buildings in the rear, and there are really two that are adjacent to the residential neighborhood, right here, these two. This one is adjacent to, technically, it's a church that's adjacent to it, this one, but this is a three-story structure as well. But these two buildings, we agreed, along with this one, to keep three stories in height and to move them back as far away from the neighborhood as possible. We also agreed to put a buffer area, and, and I want to explain that to you. We've agreed to put a buffer area between these buildings and the residential area. And these are labeled BMP features on this plan. They are, however, we can now tell you, these will be dry landscaped bioretention beds with trees and shrubs. So this, this buffer you see here is a buffer from the buffer, from the apartments. So this is really gonna run from a minimum of about 50 feet in width here to a maximum about between 75 and 80 feet at its widest point here. We, that's important because these will not be wet, they will be dry, there will be bioretention features in here. We've been working with a series of different engineering firms on how we can accomplish that to minimize impacts on adjacent properties. So we wanted to let you all know that. Second, we heard a concern about the, with the neighbors. We actually held a meeting in May with, at the university, and we invited the residents of L&amp;J Gardens to attend that meeting, it was actually the first week of May. We had just filed our application, we wanted to get to them as quickly as we could. And we had a good number of people in attendance, approximately 20 people from L&amp;J Gardens attended the meeting. Some of the people, one person was at the meeting, is here today, and the others who are here today were not able to attend that meeting for whatever reason. So, so we hadn't heard from anybody until today, but I did want to let you know that we customarily reach out to people, adjacent property owners, we did in this case as well. And so we've discussed with them a couple of concerns they had. The first, in, in the course of today, there was a concern raised by one of, one of the residents that there are some platted streets that come through here, as you see, another one up in here. They wanted to know if we were running the streets, if we were gonna have any street connection between their neighborhoods and this. And of course, we told them there would be none, there'd be no access, vehicular access at all through here. One gentleman asked if we would look at fencing along here in addition to just the buffers that we talked about, and we said we'd be happy to look at that with them, because this is a gated community, we have, this is gated here. So we're happy to look at fencing along, along those lines as well. Another issue was, one of the gentlemen who's here today was also at the meeting, asked us to actually come to his, look to his lot because he has some of the trees on the property today are, over his property line are falling into his yard and, and causing leaves and stuff like, asked us to trim those back, take them out if necessary. We told him we would do that. We then agreed to come to his home and make sure we, we get all that taken care of. So I would tell you, we've been very sensitive to this, to that neighborhood. It's, it's a longstanding neighborhood, and we understand that. And we've done everything we can in the design to make sure we reduce the impacts on the property while at the same time, it's a valuable piece of property owned by Virginia Wesleyan, and they're trying to use it to promote the, both their graduate program, provide new housing in the area that's really nice and upscale. And the rents here will start, I think the rents here start in the, I think, $1,300 range per month. So this is not gonna be, and, and by the way, Franklin Johnson Group has a three-to-one ratio of, of rent in terms of your income. So basically, you'd have to make about $40,000 a year to qualify to be able to live there. So we're not gonna have too many students, we'll probably have some professors, and things of that nature, but we're not gonna have, we're probably not gonna have any undergraduates, to be honest with you. But, and, and that's where they start. We also did not design this for four-bedroom quads like you might in a university. This is mostly one and two-bedroom units. So it's attractive to us as developers because, not just Virginia Wesleyan, it's a great location. It's on a beautiful road, it's quiet, it's across from the university, it's across from Norfolk Academy, it's right near, near the interstate. It's a very attractive, and we think it'll be a very, very popular, normal, free-market apartment complex. Rather than a, it's not gonna be a student housing area, if you will, by any sense of the word. So we tried to address their concerns in terms, we told them about the bioretention areas, and they were surprised to them, we told them the roads won't go through. So we've tried to address their concerns, but we want to be good neighbors and listen further. And we're happy to answer any questions you all might have in, in any regard about the application. So, Mr. Chairman, hearing none.
Questions?
And Mr. Johnston is with, Franklin Johnson is with me, I signed up a card for him. He's really available for any questions if you have any, but I don't think it'll be necessary that he speak unless, unless you want to say something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if he doesn't want to speak, I won't call on him.
Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Our first speaker in opposition is Cindy Wilkins. And if you'll please state your name for the record.
My name is Cindy Wilkins. I live at 1033 Sanford Avenue, which is a community that is adjacent to L&amp;J Gardens and is also adjacent to the university. Okay? You can get into our community either by Wesleyan or by Baker Road. Now, we were not approached by the developers, but I've been pleased today that he did address a couple of our concerns, our civic league concerns, that here again, the Bayside area seems to be a very high-density population area. With the apartments that have gone up, the homes that have gone up, just in the three and a half years that I have lived here, I have seen things increase and traffic problems continue to increase. And of course, with the outlet malls and the university, we will see, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the university building properties, but when they say that it's gonna be open to the public, then I am concerned. I just heard the gentleman say that you have to qualify to live there, but are they still opening it up to the public first before they are openly, opening it to the university folks? That is my main concern that was not addressed today. He did address my concern about, or our concern, I should say, about the unincorporated part of Norwich Avenue, which we were concerned maybe would be opened from the back of the apartments into the residential area of L&amp;J and Diamond Lake Estates. Because we've noticed an increase, an influx of traffic just with the Taco Bell up there at the corner of North Hampton and Norwich. So we anticipate that traffic is not gonna get any better. He also addressed another concern of mine with the no subsidized housing, which would those apartments would, would not be. And also, another one of our concerns was that there would be a fence, or that they would be willing to look at a fence at the back of the buffered property which faces, or which would be onto L&amp;J's property residential areas. So that's pretty much my concerns right now is with the continued density issues that we seem to be having in Bayside issue. Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions of the speaker? No questions? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Matthew Gobla. If you'll please state your name for the record.
My name is Matthew Gobla. I live at 660 Avi Drive. I use Westland Drive to get to the highway to work every day, and I've seen a dramatic increase in traffic in the last two years. We've had apartments going up, Baker Woods, Summer Haven, a new, a new one still in development at Newtown and Baker Road. We've had the legacy townhomes go up, we've had Diamond North Apartments go up, and these are all within two miles, or even a mile and a half, of this area. So we've had a dramatic increase in the amount of high-density housing and apartments. We already have big traffic issues on Westland Drive, especially with North Collegiate, or Christian, I forget exactly the high school that borders Westland University. Traffic controllers are posted there during most school days to control the in and out of traffic, so that they'll change the lights to allow students who are leaving with their parents out. I have a lot of issues with taking down the forest, being a huge nice buffer there, and the rezoning goes against city, you know, the city of Virginia Beach's goal to increase its urban tree canopy from 38 to 45% by the year 2030. And especially for such a high-density place, if it was developed into residential properties, you would see, at least that you wouldn't be losing so much or even projected tree cover, yes, if it was developed into residential, a lot of the forest would probably go away too, but at least the lot would grow back, or trees would be planted in neighbors, in yards and would provide for denser coverage than all the parking hardscape features here in the plan. I also have issues with decrease in property values, increase in the urban heat island effect, increased stormwater runoff because of all the hardscape, increased light pollution, and additional burdens, burdens to local school systems, and increased noise from construction and residents. And we've been, like I said, basically, our area and cut through, I've experienced pretty much two years of solid construction. I very much oppose this. And I, I'm also a big wildlife advocate, and I am a backyard birder and bird watcher, and you're gonna lose a lot of nice birds that probably visit these adjacent properties yards.
Thank you. Any, any questions of the speaker? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker in opposition is Patricia Payne.
Please state your name for the record.
My, my name is Patricia Payne. I live at 1021 Fairlawn. My home will back directly up to the three-story apartment buildings, which is about the size of this building, I believe. How would you like some, a building like that over your backyard, looking through your windows from the third story? Think about it. That's a lot. That is a lot to ask, and I'm with him on the birds. We do have wonderful wildlife there and with lots of activity. I also have feeders and enjoy watching the woodpeckers and the cardinals and the bluejays and, and all of this, you know, animals that reside in those woods. But our biggest concern is the, the buffer. I mean, they said it's a 10-foot tree line. Does anyone realize how small 10-foot is? Three trees, maybe? Maybe? Three trees. How much can you see through three trees? I have a concern with that. You know, we're avid in our yard, I'm very active, I have a gorgeous yard, by the way, and you take away the tree line and the privacy, and you're really taking away a big part of what that neighborhood is about. It's a very park-like setting, a lot of the yards are open to one another, they're not fenced off, and it's part of the character and the beauty of the neighborhood. Wesleyan's got a lot of property on the other side with trees that they're happy they can tear down if they want next to one of their, their other buildings. You know, why can't they make it a soccer field or a park? Why does it gotta be these monstrosities that they're three and four stories? That's, that's a lot, because most of these homes are ranch homes. And that's what I have to say, and I oppose it 100%.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? None? Thank you, ma'am, for coming.
Okay, our last speaker is William Walters.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I received a copy of the site plan.
Name, please, for the record.
William Walters. I live at 1021 Fairlawn Avenue. Thank you. Yeah, I received a copy of the site plan. Initially, I was pleasantly surprised. It seemed like the developer has really gone out of his way to move the apartment buildings away from, you know, the residence. My main concern is, has to do with flooding. I live on Fairlawn Avenue, which tends to flood in moderate rain. Now, there is a drainage ditch that shares a common border between that woods and our properties. Now, this ditch really doesn't function very well. So my concern is, how would this runoff be handled with this new development, the parking and whatnot? Will it adversely affect an already bad situation within our neighborhood with regards to flooding? Thank you very much.
Any questions of, of Mr. Walters? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any other speakers signed up.
Well, yes, please do, please come forward. We need to get you to fill out a card before you leave.
Already filled it out.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, well, please.
How much do you spell somewhere in there?
Please.
Might be filed under somebody else's number.
Please come to the podium, come to the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I am one of the residents of L&amp;J Gardens that lives directly...
State, state your name for the record.
Jackie Bowe, B-O-W-E.
Thank you.
1017 Fairlawn Avenue, Virginia Beach. And I'm one of the properties that is directly behind the Wesleyan property. Lived in L&amp;J for most of my life, enjoyed the wooded area, it's been a very nice neighborhood to grow up in. I will say this, I'm not anti-Westleyan. Virginia Beach is fortunate to have a new university, and I realize that the school does have to expand. I love my privacy in the back, but I don't want to stand in the way of progress either. I see that Franklin Group has done a pretty masterful job, I think, to try to better the situation and the property value. We've been kind of sweating for years what was gonna be done with that piece of property. We've been kind of sweating for years what was going to be done with that piece of property. Again, my neighbor also mentioned, too, about the ditch. Our landscape in our neighborhood is a little lower, and the property across from the ditch is a little higher. So we're concerned, too, about possible flood issues, and we talked to Franklin Group about that, too. They're not sure whether or not if that's, the ditch is maintained by the city, which I suspect that it is, and whether or not if the city will also have some influence as to either deepening the ditch or putting a pipe in along that border so that our properties don't flood out. Excuse me. That's our main concern. And again, too, when you lived in your, in that property for as many years as that I have, when one morning you walk out and you got a skyscraper in your backyard, it's a little different. But again, I'm not against Wesleyan. I am just concerned about those other issues and also overhanging trees that are right on the borderline of the ditch that may also cause problems during storms and so forth. I had one tree once before that fell from Wesleyan property, and Wesleyan took care of it for me instantly. They've been good neighbors. There are people, too, that have been nice enough. They've invited us to meetings. They really put out the olive branch in a sense to try to let us know what's going on, so we're not too surprised. So for whatever input that that may mean on this project, that's what I had to tell you today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Bowe?
And I did find his card.
Thank you. And we did find your card. Would you like to have a moment for rebuttal, Mr. Nutter?
Thank you. As I indicated, a couple of things I'd like to tell you. One is, we, Mr. Bowe was at the meeting and asked us to come in and take a look at his trees, so we didn't have his address till today, so I'm glad he came today so we could get his address. And we assured him that the buffer we've got there is gonna, it's gonna change, there's no question about it. But the bulk of that area, we think we can preserve a good percentage of those, what's going on in there, because of the bioretention system we're looking at. This is not going to be a wet pond system, it's gonna be a dry area, bioretention with shrubs, additions to that. So we tried to explain to them this will be more than, it's just a 10-foot area of no impact on those trees. The other thing I'll tell you, and you, you've been in development, many of you, for a long time, and you know that oftentimes if you start disrupting trees, that can impact other trees in the area. One of the nice parts about this is, that's really true here on this side where you have a hard surface. But here, where this is going to be a soft area, where we're planting in shrubs, but we don't have that hard area. So a lot of these trees, the root systems of these trees that are left can really survive and have a real good chance of maintaining themselves. So there will be a change, there's no question about it, I can't deny that. But we've done everything we can to minimize that, too, so that really is a large, large, large buffer, much more than 10 feet. The other question they raised is about the ditch and the flooding. Real quickly, on the flooding, this property design, believe me, even though the water, all the water is directed in this direction, the, the outfall is out here and runs underneath Wesleyan Drive into an existing lake. So in addition to that, we're gonna be lowering the height of this property here, along this area here, by about 18 inches. So, sorry, this area, I'm begging pardon, about 18 inches. These buildings remain higher, but this area here will start getting lower. So the drainage, all the drainage we're gonna have is gonna be focused into these features and out to the outfall, and won't be going in across. The ditch, if, we've made it clear to them that if the ditch is on our property, we will be happy to pipe it and seal it up, because it's, it's, we're happy to do that. We're not draining it. There's probably some drainage into it today from the property, but we don't intend to drain any, anything into that ditch whatsoever. I'm just not sure, we, we told them we don't know which, where exactly the ditch is in terms of whose property line it's on, and if maybe we can work with them along something like those lines. We're not trying, we won't be putting any additional water into that ditch, however. We'll be running it into a first-class new stormwater system that meets all the new state standards and drains in the opposite direction away from their neighborhood. So, hope that helps, Mr. Chairman, and answer their questions for them, and we'll continue to work with them as we always do.
I know that there was some conversation about a fence...
Right.
For privacy. Is that, is that a good possibility, a strong possibility?
I'd say a strong possibility. This is, is fully gated along the front, and if that'd make them feel better, we're happy to do that. We've made that clear to them today.
Because I know on the front, it's, it's aluminum, real pretty.
Right. Exactly. It's gonna be, that's ornamental. The one in the back would not be. It's probably gonna be, depending what the condition's like, it's in there, we'd either use sort of a slatted chain link, or we'd go with a solid, solid fence. It varies once you get back in those woods as to what will work, what won't. Another concern about fencing, though, is that, because I have fencing in my yard and a lot of trees, and every storm, I have to replace the fence.
Breaks the fence.
Because the stuff falls and breaks through the fence. So we'll, we'll work out something back there with them, but, but we have no objection to putting a fence along that line. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions of Mr. Nutter? There be no questions, then we'll close, close the public hearing and open it up for the commissioners to discuss. Who would like to lead off? Mr. Redmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thornton and I had the, had the pleasure of going out to Virginia Wesleyan and going over in some, in some depth both the origins and the design of this plan. And I know that there are some folks who are understandably concerned about change. That's always gonna happen on someone else's property, on property that you can't control. I, I do think this is a very well-thought-out and well-designed plan. To the greatest extent, they've tried to put the buildings up against the roadway to conceal the parking to the greatest extent in the middle. I think the stormwater, given the, the laws and regulations with stormwater management today are, are far, far beyond that which exists in L&amp;J Gardens and a lot of other established neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. So those aren't things that particularly concern me. This is a significant piece of Virginia Wesleyan's long-term strategic plan, and I do believe that our city is fortunate to have such a high-quality and high-value asset in what is soon to be, if it isn't technically already, Virginia Wesleyan University. And they've taken great pains to integrate the design and the fencing and the like into that. So I certainly support it, I hope everyone else will support it, and look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You might like to make a motion. Jack?
I just, I'd like to say a few things. And one is, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it would have been nice if they'd left a forested buffer, and it may have affected the number of buildings, may have affected the parking. But it would have been, you know, during, you know, their, you know, the planning stages to have, you know, thought a little bit more about the neighborhood and thought about the, the residents that are gonna back up to that, that, you know, yes, it's not their property, but it is zoned currently residential. I think it's R-15? Is that what it?
Yeah.
R-15. So it, you know, they may not necessarily have, you know, it's, it's not zoned, you know, apartment, you know, A-12, I think is what it's, A-24.
A-24.
Right, A-24. So it, you know, it is gonna be changed, but I mean, we're, we're actually rezoning it and from what, with existing zoning is. So it's, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to point out that it was not a by-right development, and, you know, a conception of, of a more substantial buffer would have been nice, you know, because currently it's, it's R-15.
Karen?
I wonder if I could ask the, the woman where her property is located?
Certainly.
Can I do that?
Certainly.
All right. Second. Are you in the little triangle there?
Okay. Yeah, I, I find myself in agreement with Jack. I'm not in opposition to it in at first blush. I, I mean, I generally like the idea because I think that Virginia Wesleyan is a good neighbor, and I think that their concept of what this will provide the area is a good one. I agree with David that it's not a logical place for retail, so, and, and I lament that R-15 is gonna change like that. I do think that Jack has a point about providing additional buffering, and that would be a matter of perhaps just making a few adjustments that would allow for a greater buffer for those residents between their properties and this property, or their property and these buildings. That will be, while the site plan looks like there'll be a good deal of room, in reality, not very much. So I, I don't know that there's, there's opportunity for that at the moment, but I would like, I think it bears taking into consideration.
Mr. Chairman? Mike?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. I think they've done a wonderful job of planning. It's not the most dense apartment zoning they could ask for. I'm sure there's certain numbers have to work in order to make this project a go and make it a quality that we would like to see and that Virginia Wesleyan would like to see. So I think it's...
Motion made by Mr. Inman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Redmond.
Vote is open. I vote 11 to 0. The commission has reviewed the application of the investment, Franklin Johnson Group Management and Development LLC.
Thank you. Thank you. Please call the next application.
The next application is item number six, an application for Hospice House of South Hampton Roads, Inc., for conditional use permit, Hospice House, Centaurium on property located at the east side of Upton Drive, north of Nemo Parkway, District 7, Princess Anne.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for this time. To present to you what we see as a very important opportunity for our community to meet a need. We are...
Can you...
Yes, I apologize. My name is Cindy Curtis.
I could have told you that.
Barry could have told you that.
Come on.
I'm not used to having to say who I am.
Really?
It's, it's something that is heartfelt to me and to all of the members of our 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation. Our intent is to ask the city to provide us with 2.25, give or take, acres on Upton Drive for the development of a 12-room hospice facility. In the informal session, you saw some of the photos associated with the wonderful design that has been done. We think it's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. Needless to say, this is a very quiet use. This is for, for folks who are dealing with end-of-life care needs. There are many individuals who are not capable of dealing with the end-of-care life needs in their homes. Unfortunately, in our region, there are only 12 beds provided at a Centera assisted living facility. There is a stipulated need by, done by community analysis for a minimum of 36 beds, so we would like to attempt to reduce the backlog of beds that are needed in our region. We've spent quite a bit of time working with the city. This has been a discussion that's been ongoing since 2014. We have met with the surrounding neighborhood two times. We met with Mrs. Henley's regular commission meeting that she holds monthly to present the proposal. We've made adjustments to the proposal based upon the feedback that we received from the community, South Shores Estates. We moved the location of the facility northwards to make sure it engages with the most tree buffer that is provided along the lakeside, stormwater lakeside. We have every intention of adding to that buffer. The city, because of their implicit support for the hope of this moving forward, agreed to sell approximately 14,000 square feet of property to the abutting neighbor to provide an additional buffer from what they had already purchased from the city. We have already, the city has already placed trees. We will add to the buffering of the trees that have already been placed along that north border. We are excited because we believe that this is a project that the community will get behind. We estimate, give or take, $5 million to build the facility, and then we hope to raise another $5 million for an endowment, because we would eventually, once the endowment is set, would like to not have to turn anyone away for the need of this service. It's near and dear to my heart, because I had a mother-in-law who I had to put into a facility for her end-of-stage life care, and it could have been better, it could have been gentler, and we've designed a facility that will allow for full family input, the best of care. We will not be operating it. We will hire a professional group to come in, medical doctors, nurses, and a professional group to run it. And as I said, it's a very quiet use and designed to fit in as best as possible with the surrounding neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you have any specific development questions, I've got the incomparable Bob Miller here to back me up, in case there's something there that is, a concern is raised that I might not be able to answer.
Thank you. Any questions of Cindy? Thank you.
Mr. Miller, did you want to speak on this application?
Since I'm in trouble.
I was gonna... She was... Chairman, I've heard Mr. Miller taught a lot of things, but I have not heard... My wife and my kids and my grandkids... You were trying to consent it to you.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm, I'm just letting you know that what Cindy said is very important. I'm on the board also. I'm Bob Miller, professional engineer in Virginia Beach. And this is a, a facility that certainly has, you know, a large need, just like she explained. I think we've done what the staff asked us to do, and we were ready to obviously be approved in the consent. So we'll just sit and see what the concerns are and be able to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker says that he's in partial opposition, and he represents South Shores Estates, and that's Bob Kluger?
Yeah.
If you can state your name...
Close enough.
Thank, state your name for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Bob Kluger. I live at 2084 Beers Drive in Virginia Beach in South Shore Estates, and I worked with the South Shore Estates civically, and we have had a couple of good meetings with the, with the hospice facility and their people. I want to, I provided you with some background documentation, which you may have not have read, had a chance to even read, but I sent it to you by email, and I believe it was provided. What it showed was that we have spent, as a neighborhood, much time working with the city over many years, trying to turn this particular property into a wooded area, or at least more trees and shrubs. And as you know, or from the background know, that the city originally acquired this through eminent domain. They took the property in order to produce, in order to extend Upton, which, which they did as a two-lane road. They also, in, consistent with that, they built or provided some of the land for two houses, humanity homes, and they have been built habitually. The eminent domain was not, though, justified on the purpose of creating commercial space. Nowhere in any of the documentation indicated that. And the rest of the neighborhood, of course, is residential. This is on the lake, although it does not own any of the lake water itself. That's all owned by the property owners from across the lake. So from a point of view, you can see the site and where the lake is, people that live across from it, and then the rest live down. From a neighborhood standpoint, we, of course, first and foremost, wish to make this stay as a park, or if it cannot be a park, rather as a wooded area, in consistent with the cities' desire to have more trees and wooded areas. If that is not possible, if it must be turned over to anything else, then through a survey, we determined that, yes, we would support the hospice, though many people who live and most affected by this certainly were not in favor of that. But as an overall neighborhood, we said we would prefer hospice over other things. What took us by surprise was, in our second meeting with the hospice folks, they were actually told, no, we're not going to give you the center of the property, we are only going to give you part of the property. And that raised the hankers of everybody in the neighborhood, for we knew that once you rezone that site, there is nothing to stop you from rezoning the site that's further to the south, and turning it into a business facility or anything else you so desire. That would be totally against the community, the original zoning, and as far as we're concerned, it doesn't even help the hospice facility. That facility does not have to sit that far down. In fact, it would help the neighborhood if the whole property were given to them, or the rest of the property were used as wooded or open space. the rest of the property were used as wooded or open space. So, what we're really asking is, as an absolute minimum, do not subdivide that property in the way you have shown. We were not party to that, we were only informed of it, and we never agreed to. That frankly is the position from the survey of the community folks. I'm not the only one here to talk from the community, though, so I don't want to preclude others who actually live adjacent to or across from. Any questions?
Karen?
You are aware that it's...
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I threw my voice over there.
Yeah, very good.
That this is a conditional use permit, so they aren't, they haven't rezoned. They're not rezoning the property, correct?
They are asking to rezone the property, or you can't build something on residential. Somebody's asking to...
It's a conditional use permit, correct? Does someone want to clarify that, so we can all understand what's happening on the property?
It is a conditional use permit. It's not a rezoning.
Dr. White?
The site, the site is zoned R-7.5, it's residential, but you can have this use on a residential site with a conditional use permit, and that's what they're here for.
Let me just be sure that I understand. Would that also allow the city, once this is done, to rezone or use a conditional use permit to rebuild a medical office building on the remaining part of the site?
A medical office building or anything commercial of that nature is not allowed in the R-7.5 district, so they would have to come in and rezone the property. It's processed just like this, and you would get the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Okay, I'm sorry for my ignorance on that. But you do understand our hesitancy that, once this is done, there will be more likely an impediment to use the rest of the property for something besides a hospice, and as we've been, at least alluded to by the city, a medical office building, which is, we feel, should be addressed at the same time this is, so that we aren't kind of caught later on. Does that make sense?
Any other question?
I don't have any other questions.
Let me answer a part of that for you, and the staff can help me.
Yes.
The city owns this property, and it's zoned residential.
Correct.
If they made a decision to put it on the market and sell it, they would have to go through an RFP process, and they'd advertise, and developers would come along and tell them what they wanted to do, or the city would advertise it for a specific use. And that's got to go before city council, before they advertise it. So, there are layers of protection for your neighborhood. If the city decided they wanted to sell it and be done with it, you get a chance to weigh in on the question to sell it, and then the question of use, and then the question of who they respond to in the RFP. So, it's just not going to happen in a vacuum one night that you're going to wake up and see a building being built out there. I've done work with the city on several parcels, and it's a very lengthy, cumbersome process that is for the purpose of protecting the public. So, hopefully, the staff can nod their head and say, that's how it works, and I don't think you should worry about someday something out there that's offensive, because the people on city council are not, they don't like offending neighborhoods with things that you all don't like, so...
I appreciate that, and yet it is the staff that told us that the other part of the property would probably be used for a medical office building, so I have to also weigh that somewhat with the reception we've been given. But I appreciate the feedback.
The answer could be, but it's going to be a process, a real process. Any questions of our speaker?
No, but that was very clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker in opposition is Cheryl Caffian.
Caffin.
Caffin. You can state your name when you get to the podium, please.
It's a tough name. Cheryl Caffin, 2201 Beers Drive in South Shore Estates. As the picture shows, the property adjacent, I am the property, so this would be my backyard that is being proposed. So, I have several questions and concerns. This past May was our 20th year in our home. When we purchased our home, we were told that there would be no ingress, egress into the land behind us, because there was no extension, and the city wouldn't have allowed it. We have, on this lake, we have spectacular views. There's kayaking, there's sailing. We have wildlife with ospreys, herons, and hawks, daily visitors. We actually have a pair of nesting bald eagles on the lake as well. Recently, I had Arbus come and do some trimming on my trees, but also looked at this land that is behind there that the city is allowing us to purchase. It's got protective trees on there, so I'm not sure if the city's done any true looking at the property to see if there's any actually other protective trees that... He told me if I were to cut it, I would get a penalty. So, again, the homeowners own the lake, it is a private lake. I have several concerns, and it was great to hear the earlier session where CJ was mentioning the part about a preliminary stormwater analysis. Has that been done on this property?
Oh, yes, okay.
I'm assuming no.
Yes.
No, it has been?
Yes.
Where are the storm drains going? So, on this property here, it covered, in their previous live presentation, it covered water, and it covered sewers, but it never covered storm drains. We want to know where are the storm drains going?
The detailed design work is not yet begun. Preliminary stormwater study and assumptions made in that study have been reviewed by our development services here, and they have accepted that. I cannot tell you the details.
But we know that. I don't know it right now. In other words, that would have been determined in the study. So, I apologize, we don't know that answer to that, but they have determined where the outfall's going to go. So, I just, we just need to get somebody that could answer that question.
Yes, well, the last time the storm drains were worked on, there's a bit closer to the Red Robin up there. When the city came in to do stormwater improvements on that particular drain, they took out 100 foot across of trees, 50 foot on both sides. The neighbors across the lake immediately called, had this halt, stopped, wanted to know what's going on, and they said it was standard practice for them to wipe out 100 foot of trees, because they needed that level of access. If this is not located on here, then you could be wiping out another 100-foot trees that are already built and established across there to add in additional storm drain. That's why I'm concerned where this is not being shown. So, one of the areas is that, when the city did that, it wasn't notified that they were going to be removing those trees. We want to know if they're going to be notifying us, or are they going to be removing trees, and if so, what the impact is to us. We have an easement.
Good, thanks for dealing with me. You are...
You look from our pool down, there's an easement of storm drain there, 30-foot easement. I want to know if the city's going to be connecting into that one, or they're going to be adding a new one, because if so, then you're putting my family at risk, the pool at risk for construction to be going through.
Ma'am, we have a time on speakers, and your little red light just went off, so can you give a quick wind-up?
Yes, I can do a real quick. Couple of this items there, you've got trash being picked up between, not in the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. I don't want trash pickups at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. Want to make sure we get that. The traffic pattern, the traffic pattern, we want to know how that's going to be going. You've got 28 spots here, but you've got over full-time staff, nurses, doctors, attendants. You don't have adequate spacing. Where is the overflow going to go? Also, I wanted to know, the biggest concern I have about this facility is, it's a nonprofit. I work in healthcare. I understand it's a very noble cause, but you're talking about a nonprofit that you're basing funding. They're going to be able to take in people that, whether you can pay or not. What happens if this goes under in three years? What happens? Can this be turned into a rehab drug facility? Will I have that in my backyard? What is my guarantee that that will remain a hospice? You're limiting it, because it's inpatient, so you're limiting the use of this property. And that is my grave concern. I mean, it's a noble cause, I just don't want it in my backyard.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you. Any other speakers against?
Yes, we have one last speaker, and that's Muriel Stahlmaker.
Hello. My name is Morella Stahlmaker.
I've been close, I've been close most of the day, so...
I have a few things I'd like to hand out. Is this, can I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just real quickly, before you start my...
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry?
State your name for the record.
My name is Morella Stahlmaker. I live at 1040 Sandoval Drive. I'm part of South Shore Estates. What you're about to receive is a copy of our deed, because I want to make sure you're very clear what we're talking about. And when you receive this, what you'll see is that the bottom is where my home is. Behind us is the waterway. You can't see it up there, but you'll see it in your hand, is the waterway. And the waterway is part of our deeded property, and where our water stops is where the proposal is for this hospice. So, when we say it's in our neighborhood, it's in our neighborhood. And while this is just my home, all of the homes adjacent to me have the same issue, where the water goes against the property. The pictures I'm sending you are pictures directly from my backyard. And I'm showing you, though, because even though in that, it may look like the water is, we're talking about less than a mile. So, where I am looking at the hospice and seeing into them, they also would see into our homes. So, I want to make sure that that's very clear. My direct neighbors and I are strongly opposed to this hospice, and I have six reasons, and I know I have three minutes. So, I'm going to speak quickly. But six reasons why we're strongly opposed to this hospice in our neighborhood. Number one is safety. This hospice will bring visitors, volunteers, and employees into our neighborhood. These strangers will be able to look into our homes, they'll see our children, our daily activities, our patterns, while we are unaware of who they are or where they came from. And that is why you don't put commercial properties in residence. You expect a certain modicum of privacy. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Am I yelling? I apologize. I've never done this, I don't know what I'm doing.
Yeah, yell away.
So, that is why you don't put commercial properties in our neighborhoods. This land we're discussing is zoned residential, it directly backs to our property, it's our neighborhood. Please keep it safe for our private homes, and keep it for private home development by keeping it residential. Number two, there's six, I'm on number two. Environmental health of the lake, which is really the Back Bay watershed, that's the waterway we're talking about. Most people who spend any time on the beach or on the water understand that you can't leave a can or a fast-food wrapper out there, and their landscaping is beautiful, very prone to maybe having lunch in the back. But the reason you can't have those things out, there's always a breeze near water, and that leaves debris that goes into our waterway. Now, one of the buying, one of the pros to our neighborhood is that we use this lake. We swim, we kayak, we paddleboard. No one wants to swim in trash and filth, we just don't. And this, we're, that's our fear, that this is one of the things that will happen when you bring strangers into the neighborhood. They just don't know better, and they don't live there, they don't care. Number three, future development. What if, and Cheryl mentioned this, in five to eight years, the hospice doesn't have the financial means to stay open? For me, a 12-unit hospice would be ideal for a halfway home or a drug rehab. Would you want that in your neighborhood? I don't want that in mine. You wouldn't want that for your family either. There are places in Virginia Beach for this. I don't think it's in a residential area. Number four is liability. We discussed that waterway is ours. Right now, it's owned by the city, it's zoned private, I mean, not private, no trespassing. If we put a building there, it's going to bring people in. If someone were to drown in that lake, as the homeowners, we're responsible. So, you may think, you know, reliable. So, you may think, no one will sue you if they drown in your water. Maybe they wouldn't, but we would be the ones that has to hire the attorney, miss work, and deal with it. And it's just a hardship that you wouldn't expect, or a vulnerability you shouldn't expect in your home. Number five of six, I'm almost done. All right, increased activity, non-conducive residential living. I don't believe they would have emergency vehicle sirens coming into this facility, but they would have lights. And again, this is directly across from the facility, and all of our master bedrooms are on this side of the water. So, these lights would be coming in at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. It just doesn't add to our quality of life. And lastly, number six, all of the arguments I presented to you result in a decrease of our property value. It's one of the first things I did when I found out about this, is I brought a Realtor over and said, what is this going to do, our property value? And they said, it's going to decrease. It makes it less vulnerable. Talking to our neighbors, they said, if this hospice had been there, and I, including myself, I wouldn't have bought this property. Lower real estate taxes when you get the, excuse me, lower home values. And in my research, I haven't seen any hospice that's paid any real estate taxes. And that real estate tax, doesn't that go to our schools? I'm not sure. But if the city chooses to disregard the pleas of the residents who are directly impacted by the building of this hospice, then I beg, may you please make it a requirement, the hospice include aesthetically pleasing fence blocking any access to the water, that you maintain the trees that are already there, and plant additional trees to buffer protecting our privacy. I think that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions of the six statements?
I've got one.
Okay, Dee.
And I can't address the landscaping on the lake, because I'm not quite sure, or the liability if somebody falls into the lake or drowns, but I think you have more opportunity for that to happen with the land undeveloped than you do as a hospice house. I can't address, being a funeral director, and pretty much an expert on end-of-life, that this is a very quiet use of this land. The likelihood of you having a lot of foot traffic or a lot of people in and out of that building is minimum at best. I have a couple of funeral homes. We don't have a lot of traffic, it's very quiet. Hospice houses are very, very quiet. They're great, and I hope you never have to experience it in your life, but they are a very, very nice facility to have in our communities. I don't think that it will impact you as you are envisioning. The ambulances won't come in with red lights on, they just won't. And I mean, they want, you're not going to have that kind of, it's, they don't, that kind of use for this facility. It's quiet, and most of people that end up in a hospice facility, just for this particular one, I know, is because they don't have somewhere to go. So, you're not going to have 20 family members descending in on one person in a bed. The likelihood is probably that they don't have anybody, unfortunately for them. So, to have a facility like this that they can go to, to be well taken care of, and I know that this particular facility will probably be one of the top ones, probably, probably in the state of Virginia, we're that fortunate to have. You just, I think that it's, I understand your concern, but I think that you might, I'm counting on you being pleasantly surprised that this isn't going to impact you as much as you think.
Ms. Oliver, I appreciate you saying that, and I do believe we, and I am sensitive to the issue of the hospice and what's being done there. And I absolutely believe Virginia Beach needs another one, and they have been so kind and easy to work with. But here's another reality I want you to just think about. I have this home, and we enjoy being on that water. And now, after this hospice is built, and if we don't have these buffers at a minimum, I'm out there enjoying my paddleboard, knowing that right across that lake is someone losing their best friend, their mother, their spouse. What kind of quality is life, is that for our neighbors, knowing that? How insensitive us to enjoy the lake in front of them? So, it's just a thought we have, you may not agree, and I understand that, but this is our home. And I would just want to ask you, would you want it in your backyard? Because this isn't like across the street down the way, this is our backyard.
Right, and I appreciate that, but as a land use, as a facility or a business coming on a piece of land, as far as it impacting anything, it's relatively quiet.
I would ask that we maintain residential, and that if it were to be up for sale, I personally would like to... In fact, that's how this came up, is I actually called the city to ask if I could buy it, and they said something was going on. This is months and months ago. I would love to have a home there for my parents, so I can keep an eye on them, and I believe others would as well. This is a residential property. So, I wish them well, I just don't wish it in a residence, anyone's, not just ours, any residence. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
No, absolutely.
Any questions of Ms. Stahlmaker? Karen?
I'm not sure if it's a question for you so much as it's a question, because the conceptual I'm looking at provides a pretty substantial buffer behind the building on the lake. So, there's one, there is a substantial buffer there. Are you asking for a more robust buffer than what's being, what's already in existence and is where the building will be situated?
That's a great question. One of the first presentations, we saw there was no buffer. The second one said they might be, and that they were going to try to keep it, but Lynn Haven River now is thinking they could put something better there. And with all due respect on the buffers and landscaping, the city did put up, I think, eight or 10 trees, two of which, about two months ago, two of which are already dead. So, when someone says, trust me, we're going to have a buffer, if there's any... So when someone says, trust me, we're going to have a buffer, if there's any chance they're taking those trees down, I'm opposed. If there's not a fence there, I'm opposed. For the safety of us. And while you say it may, it's susceptible now, it's going to be more so when you have a piece of, you're going to have a hospice there, and there'll be volunteers, which is great, you want volunteers, but they're going to have lunch breaks, and that's on our waterway. And this is the Back Bay watershed, so just to be clear on that.
So I think you asked some questions that we'll probably be able to get answered when they return to the podium, so that we can ask those questions of them.
Thank you.
So we're sure we can perhaps work with what you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all care to have time for, is that, no more speakers?
No more speakers.
For rebuttal?
Thank you very much. The concerns that have been expressed were not new to us, and we've heard them, and we've tried to deal with them to the greatest extent possible, with the exception of not being there. And I will let you know, we looked for quite a bit of time with the planning department for other parcels throughout the city. This by far was the best use for this type of facility. The others were more driven by economic development, higher and better uses, you can imagine, versus a nonprofit use, which is a much more quiet use. In terms of the wildlife and recreation uses, as I think you heard earlier, there are two parks within a quarter mile of this situation. Yes, it is, right now, a green field, and I respect the fact that the change from a green field to a more active use is, as you said, change. She is absolutely right, both of the speakers were right, the trees abutting this property are owned by the people across the lake. So we will not be removing those trees. What we have asked is Lynn Haven River Now and some other groups to work with us to deepen the amount of buffer with trees that will hopefully thrive in the environment. The initial trees that were put up by the city, if two are dead, I'm sure they will be replacing them. They probably didn't gator them appropriately, which is the gator water bags, it's been very dry. And I'm sure landscape management will be embarrassed that that occurred, and we'll make sure to get that fixed. Trash will be at a minimum. These residents are basically room-bound. We thought this was a wonderful site because we are designing the bedrooms that overlook the lake to allow them to have the peaceful vista through the landscaped area and then the trees. They won't necessarily be looking at the lake, as you can see, because we already have the built-in buffer. But it is a green, quiet environment. And we think a peaceful, caring environment is the way any of us would want to spend our last days. In terms of if this were to fail, we certainly aren't planning on that. Matter of fact, we're allowing ourselves in our term sheet, a modicum of time to work with the community to make sure, as I said earlier, not only to have the funds or in-kind services to build this building, but to provide an endowment to ensure the coverage of not only annual operating shortfalls that may occur, but also to hopefully accept individuals who don't have the funds necessary for this care, for us to be able to take care of our community. Safety and strangers, these will be individuals, volunteers will be individuals from our nursing staffs throughout the community, medical staff throughout the community, and our faith-based community. We will have professional nurses and doctors on staff. Like you said, family members, visits will be intermittent during quiet times. We will not have lights and sirens, as you well said, there will not be lights and sirens. And in terms of trash pickup, I can ensure you that we could write in our contract that it occurs during regular business hours, not at 3:00 a.m., because that would be disruptive to the neighbor, as well as to our community that is using the hospice facility.
May I ask you to wind up real quick?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Can we always guarantee it to be a hospice facility? I'm on the board, and I would like to say that, but never say never. But I can tell you that the city would be extraordinarily sensitive to any other adaptive reuse, and it would definitely be one that I think the community would be comfortable with. And I certainly respect your concerns there, but believe that the city is very aware of that. If there are any concerns or questions regarding infrastructure design, Bob would be happy to answer those. But we really believe we've worked hard to try to hear the concerns and are very sensitive to making this space be something that the community will be glad is in Virginia Beach.
Any questions of Cindy? Karen?
So you are amenable to changing those trash pickup hours, that's my first one. Or to designating them in a different manner.
I have, we don't have trash pickup hours right now, it will be a private service, I am sure we can ask for a certain time to do that. It certainly would, we certainly would not be, because of our residents wanting them there at 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And we are very sensitive to the fact that, yes, there is a neighborhood abutting, but there's also, you know, private sector businesses right next door. So, but we are very sensitive to that.
Any, thank you. Do you have a question?
Well, that was one of the, I actually had a staff, because it does say in the write-up that the trash pickup will occur, I think it's before 7:00 in the morning and after, I'm trying to find it.
Seven to seven, number three.
So I can see where the residents would have a concern with that. So is there a way to get that in the write-up changed?
Condition number three is seven to seven.
It says, under the trash, from the dumpster, shall not occur.
Not occur, not occur.
In the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:30.
Should not occur.
Should not.
I would welcome the opportunity to remove the "not."
Remove that. Well, and that's why when I had read it, I'm thinking, okay, well, maybe there was something different about that.
I certainly understand why you brought that forward.
Yeah, that was...
Do we have any problems with the planning department with that? No, great.
We do not.
Consider it removed, how about that?
Any other questions of Cindy?
I do have.
Okay. Let's, let's, okay, Bob, a question for you, please.
Bob, do you have any manner of answering Cheryl's questions, I think Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl's questions about, I know that we said that we don't know where the storm drains are going to go, but she had a couple questions in relation to stormwater management, so about constructing the easement that's adjacent to her property?
Yeah, there is adjacent to her property, forgive me.
I thought that's what she had said.
Maybe you should, is that, you mean over here? Yeah, we're not touching any of that.
There's one there, and there's one over there.
There is one that goes through the property, and we're not dealing with that one either.
So you'll be adding one.
Well, what we will do is honor the trees that are there, and like Cindy said, reinforce that landscaping. These are volunteer trees, by the most part, and then the rest of the trees that are on the property, a few of them have been planted by the cities. So we'll, that buffer will be consistently there. We're doing stormwater management on the property in the form of quality and quantity. And if we were to choose, the one piece would be quality, we would change to buying phosphorus credits. But we will actually do all of that on the property. So there will be a small outfall pipe that will go in that goes to the lake. But there will not be an addition of cutting down 100 trees, there will not be anything like that, we can't do that. And there are easements allowing the city to access to the lake, if that answers that.
Thank you. Anybody else question for Bob? Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Who would like to speak first?
I just have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen.
This kind of piggybacks on what Dee had said in response to some of the discussion, and that is, as I said earlier, you know, when I went to the, when we took my mother-in-law to the hospice house off Rosemont, I recall saying to my husband, wow, I'd love this in my backyard, because it was so quiet and peaceful and lovely. And while this isn't nearly as large as that, and so there isn't the availability of a lake with a walk-around that that particular location has, they've done a fine job in creating kind of a natural landscape around the building. And I wouldn't want us to make a decision in the negative here in relation to a fear of the future, when we're not talking about a rezoning yet. And Bob articulated it so well that I'm sure I'm going to do damage to it, but if that becomes the case later on for the portion of the property that's not being developed under the hospice, that would go through the process. And then, I think your concerns would, you have a lot of merit in your concern, and I would bring them forward at that point. But I think that they have every intention of making this a use that's going to be amenable to the neighborhood, and it really will be a quiet, peaceful, buffered property with stormwater managed on the property, both in relation to quantity and quality, without easements being obstructed or removed from your, or, I can't think of the word, it's gone, but without your easements being interrupted, so, for lack of better articulation.
First, I want to make sure everybody's clear, and I think I am, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that this is, the city is the owner of this property. This is a request of the applicant, which is a 501(c)(3) charity organization, which to operate a hospice facility in a 7.5 residential district, R7.5, which, if someone else wanted to do something else because of a failure of this organization, which is highly unlikely, I think, that they would have to apply for a use permit. And the uses within a 7, R7.5 are pretty narrow. So, and you're welcome, those of you who are interested can look in the city zoning ordinance and find out what those list of uses are by law in Virginia Beach. This use is probably the most, the least intensive, least, I guess, potential for intrusion into a neighborhood than I can think of in this particular location. And the organization that's going to operate it is a very responsible organization with excellent members on the board, who will, I'm sure, try to be as accommodating as they can to their neighbors, should there be any need to do so. So I'm very supportive of this use on this particular piece of property.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else want to comment before we ask for a motion? Jeff, you okay?
Good.
Would you?
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion, okay?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda item number six, hospice house at South Hampton Roads.
Motion made by Commissioner Quasny, can I have a second? Second by Mr. Horsley.
Want to modify that condition?
And we got to change condition three by removing the word "not."
Really? That, we would recognize that as a typo, that was not our intention.
Okay. Thank you.
And that includes the new condition five, right?
That includes...
The right in, right out.
Yeah, that's, and you gave that to us between meetings, the southern access will be right in, right out.
Yes, sir.
Is that, are you okay with that? You okay with that? Okay, thank you.
Vote is open. He's not here. Vote for him. About 10:00, the commission's approved the application of hospice, hospice office incorporated with the new condition number five.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number eight, an application of Grace Bible Church of Virginia Beach, Inc., for a conditional use permit, religious use, and a conditional rezoning, AG2 agricultural to conditional B2 community business on property located at 2285 London Bridge Road, District 7, Princess Anne.
Everybody want to stand up and walk around a little bit?
Yeah.
We've got some handouts coming around, it's not anything that I think you all have seen, and I'll get into that, but for the record, Eddie Verdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Grace Bible Church. I want to let the commission know that property owner, Mrs. Smith, and her son-in-law are here, along with their attorney, Les Watson, and Matt Breitenberg, and Michael Feldman with Grace Bible Church are here as well. Matt is available to speak to the commission about Grace Bible Church and all of its good works within our community. And I think all of you are probably very familiar with the church, it's a very dynamic church, very large church, and has a lot of presence in our city. He's also here, if you have any questions about an outreach that was held with the residents whose homes abut the subject property in Pine Ridge, and that was held at Princess Anne Rec Center, and also, not just Pine Ridge, but on Country Manor Lane as well. Mrs. Smith and her late husband acquired this horse farm where they resided 50 years ago. Now, the majority, they bought a couple smaller pieces, added to it a little later than that, but for 50 years, they have lived, and she and her late husband have lived and operated a very bucolic horse farm, and with a use permit is set forth in the staff valuation. Their property is located in the 75 DBN noise zone, and directly across London Bridge Road from their property is the highest noise zone, 7075 DBN. Up until the BRAC in 2004, and the MOU, and the zoning changes that took place subsequent thereto, their property was recommended for three and a half units per acre, suburban residential, just like everything that surrounds it on the south side of London Bridge Road in that area, all of which was developed after they bought their horse farm, by the way. And she could have developed 75, plus or minus, homes on her piece of property up until then. Unlike people like myself, who, our family's farm's down the street, and a lot of other people who's landed around Oceana, the Navy bought the rights, the development rights from us, that didn't happen with Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith's property was basically inversely condemned. Now, Mrs. Smith has been trying to market this property for well over a year. The reality, the property can only be used for an industrial use or a commercial use or something like what we have today. The principal use of this property is for a church. 14.6 acres of her 20-plus acre property will remain zoned agriculture, and will have a church campus on it if this is approved. The second application is the conditional rezoning to a proffered B2 with proffers that restrict the uses on what are proposed to be four parcels totaling 6.1 acres that are directly adjacent to London Bridge Road, across the property's frontage on London Bridge Road. Now, let me deal with the fact that the church is not a commercial developer, and the church doesn't have a bunch of pretty elevations of commercial development that they've done, like we typically see, and what I would typically bring in here. But the city is prepared for that, and has been for decades. We have commercial guidelines in our comprehensive plan that were adopted by this planning commission and city council, not that many years ago, actually, that are recommendations. Well, and they're recommendations that if adopted will produce very high quality, and if you read through them, and they're very extensive, and they're in your write-up, in the proffers, in your packages, and they're not "shoulds," they're "shall's." They have to be, have to be. Brick, you know, beautiful materials, it's everything that we aspire to, that's why we have those in our comprehensive plan, is things to aspire to. And in this case, they're a part of the development, they have to, they have to. So, and I realize that a number of you, maybe even the majority of you, may not have actually dealt with these in the past, because it has been some time since we've had an application that incorporated those into the requirements, because we typically, as I said, have developers with plans, and that's not the case here. But the one thing is, I would suggest to you a certainty, and that is that these will be very high-quality developed properties when that happens, and that's not going to happen overnight either. The application, two pieces of this, the church's application, I passed out to you a revised layout. That revised layout is the one that, if you approve the use permit for the church, should be adopted with it, because it's the church's use permit, and we can change that portion, the portion that's on there that shows the different configuration of the three parcels, it's not a big difference, but it is somewhat different, because we did that to show, based on the conversation I had with Rick Lohman a number of weeks ago, that we absolutely can produce three, 300-foot-long turn lanes with paper, and not a continuous lane, which is what's required for a safe entrance, right in only, or right in, right out, excuse me, on a... on a 45 mile an hour road. That's the reason for that, that's the reason for those changes. Now, as far as the entrances are concerned, we believe that when this is ultimately reviewed by the city staff and city manager, and we go through the whole process, that the determination will be made that it's the safest and best way to develop the property. The middle entrance is set because of the median break. We can't move that, okay? And to do two entrances only, which may be what we wind up with, but to do two entrances only, the entrance at the east end, if that's the one that were utilized, would be in a curve, or it would be right up against the only house that is adjacent to this property that, on the east end, that would be commercial, parcel E. And putting the entrance on the west side, which again, we believe makes very good sense, the second entrance, we have a piece of P1 property, preservation property, open space property, next to us with 110-plus feet of frontage on London Bridge Road, and we can place the tapered part of the turn lane in the existing right-of-way, we believe, without impacting that piece of property at all, and that piece of property will never have an entrance, it's a piece of P1, open space for the Pine Ridge community to our west. But the point of all that is, and Rick acknowledged this when we met, that to have full turn lanes, and three of them, would be absolutely the best thing for traffic and the safest way for it to work. But he did say, we want 100 feet of no-turn lane after each entrance. And if you've lived in the city as long as I have, you'll know that we may have that a few places, but we have it very few places. There are many, many, many places where we have less than 100 feet of no-turn lane. We will have an area, sometimes it's 20 feet, sometimes it's 30 feet, sometimes it's 50 feet, but that's always in the past been a decision that's been handled at subdivision and site plan review, not, you know, in a planning commission, or even a city council public hearing. So, what I'm saying to you is that we believe it's in the best interest of everyone, that this property have more than one entrance. If any of you have ever been by Ansel Lane and Grace Church on a Sunday, and seen what traffic is like leaving the church on a Sunday, you would not have any hesitation but to say that you would agree with that. But anyway, the issue of the entrances, the plan is to show that we absolutely can put three full turn lanes, and not have them be one contiguous lane, continuous lane. But we do recognize that it is potentially true, that we may only wind up with two entrances, and I don't think it's this body that should be trying to decide where those entrances should be, when we've got over 1,200 linear feet of frontage on London Bridge Road. All right. So, the other issue that's been discussed, and try to shorten this a little bit, is the B2 zoning. And we have, as I already said, we have proffered away, we have a long list that you have, of uses that are not appropriate for this property. This property is not at the entrance to anybody's neighborhood. The entrances we're proposing don't go to anybody's home. Excuse me. We are, the church is the one most affected, and the church doesn't want there to be any uses on their property that would be detrimental to them or to anybody else. The majority of those uses are conditional uses, but we're saying they can't be put on the property, period. The, and those additional ones we're added, will be added between now and city council, because they weren't in time, as far as to be on a part of what you're voting on today. But we're much better off to include uses that make sense, and in the B2 zoning district, there are uses that make perfectly good sense on this property that are not allowed in B1A. You can't do a yoga studio, you can't do a personal trainer, you can't do a karate place where you teach kids to do, you know, karate, karate, or any other type of indoor recreation on 7,500 square feet or less indoors, not allowed in B1A, allowed in B2. You can't do a medical lab in B1A, you can't in B2. What would be wrong with a medical lab on this piece of property? Matter of fact, I can't think of any better use, to be honest with you. Eyeglass production, repair, hearing aid production, repair, prosthetics, anything that deals with those, not allowed B1A, allowed in B2, makes perfectly good sense. And a restaurant with a drive-thru, allowed in B2, not in B1A. And we're on a four-lane divided arterial highway, not at the entrance to anybody's neighborhood, and we believe that a restaurant on any of those parcels, and a restaurant with a drive-thru in any of those parcels, a Starbucks, anything else, would be a perfectly acceptable use, and should be a perfectly acceptable use on that piece of property. So, our point has been all along, tell us the uses in B2 that don't fit, rather than be adhering to just a 1973 zoning ordinance that has categories that, for a lot of ways, have been, are outdated, have been outdated for years. But that's why we have conditional rezoning. And in this case, we need to be trying to give as many opportunities as is reasonable for this piece of property, because it's not at Red Mill, and it's not at Strawbridge, it's not in the area of the power centers, and it's going to basically be high-quality, but it's going to be a lot of mom-and-pop type of deals, is what we absolutely believe on this piece of property. So, those are the reasons why you have what you have before you. You've seen the plans, we've got buffer, we have a big buffer on the right end, adjacent to the only house that abuts commercial. It's 25-foot wide, you know, heavily landscaped. We've got category four landscaping in the back corners of the parking lot, where the parking lot's over 20 feet, and mostly, much more than 20 feet from any of the residents behind us. There's a large BMP here, and then there are BMPs all across the front, and this, all this wetlands area remains undisturbed. So, that's it in a nutshell. I just, I don't have a way to tell you what it's going to look like, other than to look at the other high-quality developments there, as was mentioned this morning, out in front of the Kroger Marketplace, and not only there, behind the Walgreens that's on Holland Road, going on the opposite side of Windsor Oaks Boulevard, I think it's called, same thing. Very nice development, all done with the, and not, in fact, not all of what's in this were shall's in those cases. There were some that weren't in that. So, we've got everything in this one that we could put, based on what the comp plan recommends. So, with that, to be happy to answer any questions, I think I've probably run out of my time, and I appreciate the extra time.
Any questions?
Would you all like to hear from Mr. Breitenberg about the meeting at the rec center with the neighborhood? I don't know whether you would or not. He'd offer to talk if you all wanted to hear from him.
Well, do we have any speakers?
Oh, yeah.
And also, Brad Martin signed up as well. I don't know if Matt did.
He just indicated questions only.
That's right. I was going to say, just, he's here for questions only.
Okay, so, we have another speaker in support, and that's Mary Smith.
And that's the, Mary's the owner of the property, and she hasn't needed, she's not necessarily for her speak. Again, if you have any questions of, I mean, she's selling this property, she's, I don't want to offend her, but she's the oldest person in the room, she is in need of selling the property.
Okay. And she's both in support and opposed, so there you go.
Well, my name is Carol Sanner. I live at 2320 London Bridge Road, which my property is directly across the street from, most of the frontage there is the frontage of our home. Yeah, we're AG2, and then we're...
Where are you? Okay.
There, back there, and back there. It's three pieces, three separate lots. I am in a very sticky situation here. My husband and I, 25 years ago, were founding, one of the founding families of Grace Bible Church, so it's been my church for 25 years. I am so pleased that the church is going to be on this property. I want that to go on record, that I am very pleased that this church is going to go on the property, for me to walk across the street and go to church, that's cool. But we have been there 38 years, and we have looked at, I'm glad we have a farmer on the team here, because we have looked across the way and have seen horses for 38 years. The problem that we're having is the four lots that are in front of the church. I'm not convinced that this is going to be good for the aesthetic of the farm community. The gentleman that was just here said that they're not impacting a neighborhood. Well, we are a neighborhood across the street. We may be on five and six and seven and 10-acre lots, but we are a neighborhood. We're Princess Anne Farms, and just because one or two or three houses are along this road with me on the other side of the road, doesn't make us not a neighborhood. We are a neighborhood. My real issues with this is that that is a deadly curve. It's not much of a curve, but it is a deadly curve. We have had several fatalities since the road has been widened, and we have had more than 23 people in our front yard, one of them being a fatality, that have come off that road because of that curve. If we are assured that we're going down from 45 to 35, you know, I'd be okay with that, but I'm thinking that that kind, that type of a road, the speed limit would not be reduced. That concerns me. My other concern is that we have seen pictures and plans of what the church is going to look like, but we have not seen any pictures or plans, other than reading brick and mortar, of what the four parcels out front would be developed into. I know that the church, in order to buy this property, needs to have those out front, but I don't want to hear a drive-thru restaurant, you know, for whatever hours in my property. I don't want to see a tattoo parlor across the street from our house. There are several things that I would add to that list that would, you know, of what they've already put on there, of things that I just don't want to see. And of course, there is the devaluing of our property with having, I say it's commercial, but, you know, the other rating of these four things. But again, I'm thrilled that it's a church and not whatever else it could be, but the four pieces of property out front very much concern me, because we have no idea what they're going to look like, no idea what it is going to be out there, and that's what's concerning me. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the speaker?
So, I have a question of preference, so to speak. So, there's kind of two options with your desires.
Right.
One would be not to rezone those parcels.
Right.
Okay? And then wait for those rezonings to come forward when an actual business is desiring of picking up a parcel.
Absolutely.
The other would be to either, I don't know if I want to use the word "downzone," because it's really in reference to something else entirely, but to take the zoning from B2 to B1A, which will exclude some of those items, those items specifically that you listed.
Yes.
Okay? Or to add more to the list of B2 that we exclude.
Right.
Actually, there's three options. You could take it down to a B1, B1A.
Right.
You could add more to the list of exclusions to address those that you're most concerned about, or you don't rezone those parcels at all. Which one makes more sense to you?
Well, I know the church has to have those properties sold in order to afford the property to move in in the first place. And so, knowing that, I love the fact that it's a church that's going in there, not to mention that it's my church going in there, but, you know, down at the end of London Bridge Road and Dam Neck Road, that is not zoned as high as what these are hoping to, and they're doing business, they're, you know, not that I would want a junior market over there either, you know, that operates 24 hours a day, but, you know, I think the downzoning is what I would prefer to, you know, assure the fact that I'm not going to hear someone's order for their tacos, you know, 12, 14, 16 hours a day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Sorry.
Anybody else have anything else to ask?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker in opposition is Teri Lavenstein. I know that stretch probably felt good.
I can't wait for it.
If you'll please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Teri Lavenstein, and I live at 2324 London Bridge Road, which is next door to Carol, which is directly across the street for proposed parcel E in the road frontage. Everything that Carol said, I 100% agree with. I'm happy it's a church. I think that would be a nice, a nice option for that property. My friends, I moved there 34 years ago, I'm very good friends with the Smiths that are across the street at Foxridge Farm. Like Carol, I've looked out at that beautiful farm across the street from my property. Like Carol, I've seen economic growth, I've seen the road widen, I've seen dead people in her front yard, and people driving across my property in the median, directly in front of my house. Anyway, needless to say, that's rough, but I've seen it. I can have no problem with the church. This is not necessarily in any order of importance, but I'll just speak my mind here. Like Carol said, it's the traffic problem. I'm specifically not limited to the ingress and egress openings, as mentioned in a formal meeting earlier, as well as mentioned here today, this afternoon. I just can't believe that three entrances and egress are just as ridiculous to me. I think that there's too much traffic, that's a blind curve. I think they're going to, I can't see how they're going to do that. I just can't even visualize it. I don't know how they're going to, if they're going to right turn only out, then where are they going to turn around to come back in front of my house to go back toward Dam Neck? And are you going to make more divide divisions in the median? I mean, what exactly, how that's going to go? I really feel like, basically, that there needs to be more clarification. I feel like this is, they've jumped the gun a little bit on this road frontage part. I think there needs to be, this needs to be revisited, and again, like, as Dr. Quasny recommended, maybe, or suggested, maybe downzone it down a little. I actually came here to ask for that, but in a formal meeting this morning, it seemed like that was kind of squashed, but revisiting that would be an option, in my opinion, considering more restrictions and limitations and guidelines, if you choose to approve this as a B2. I think, I don't know what the buildings are going to look like. Are they all going to look the same? We're talking about, this is four separate businesses going here, four separate sales. Could it be, are they going to change it? Can they change it to two? Can they change it to one? I mean, I don't know, but are they going to change their minds? Are they going to go back and ask for it to be done differently? I don't know. But are they all going to look the same? Because it's not a shopping center, so I don't really get that part. I get that they're going to be pretty, I just don't know. I'd like to know a little more about the water sewer and stormwater proposal. I think that's on a private water system with well and septic across the street, and I just think these proffers could have more, are there restrictions here? I see that, and I'm thankful for that, but with economic growth imminent in our area, I just feel like they could have more restrictions. It would be better for Pine Ridge, for the surrounding neighborhoods, for Virginia Beach as a whole, for London Bridge Road as a whole, as well as, I speak for myself, across the street on my little 4.6 acres. So, I think that's really all I have to say. Again, Carol said most of what I wanted to say, so I won't reiterate what she said.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Lavenstein?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Benjamin Schwagler. Hey, I've been close enough all day long, so I'm on a roll. If you'll just please state your name for the record.
So, my name is Benjamin Schwagler. I live at 2272 Windy Pines Bend, so right where the R is on R10, that is my backyard. Lines up right to this house, or right to the area that they're looking at selling. So, basically, I'd like to highlight another point besides the actual London Bridge Road traffic itself. Additionally, you're going to drag a ton of traffic through Windy Pines Bend and through Country Manor Lane. It is already a heavily traveled street with a lot of kids. You're going to add a lot more traffic that's going to push through to not only this church, but if you open this up and rezone this, you're going to have businesses that are going to be operating there, and people are going to cut through this neighborhood, similar to what I've heard earlier today from all of the other items that were brought up. Basically, it's just going to become a cut through at some point to gain access to additional areas. Hold on a minute for one second. All right, so additionally, yes, this is zoned right now agricultural, and I feel for the people that own the property, I really do, if they're stuck in this... the people that own the property, I really do, if they're stuck in this dead zone and it can't be zoned residential. Effectively, the property, where this butt's up to, these two neighborhoods that are on the sides, you're basically saying those are, you can't put houses where, because it's too noisy, there's already houses there. Understand the zoning laws changed. You're also saying you're opening up those houses that are already there to additional trash, noise pollution, light from all of these developments that are going to go on these roads, on the road itself, the sold properties, things along those lines. Yeah. Violently against anything going in there. Lastly, if you go up London Bridge Road, any which direction, or go down, there's a ton of business spaces that are for sale, for lease, for rent, that aren't currently being utilized. So to rezone spaces in the hope that they eventually get used for retail of some sort, it seems like a long shot at best. That's my piece. I appreciate you guys' time.
We have any questions?
I do have a question. Explain a little bit more what you're talking about, cutting through. Where are they going to cut through, from where to where?
So basically, what you're not seeing in this is a neighborhood that stretches back about two miles, that's going to run through, yeah, it's not going to be on there. If I had Google Maps, I could pull it up. All right. So Wendy Pines Bend runs through, so all of this neighborhood, you're looking at about 500 homes. You've got Piney Bark actually cuts, ties in on the other side. So basically, if you're going to, if you wanted to cut through and you didn't want to go all the way down to Nemo or Strawbridge and cut across, you can cut through this neighborhood, through Wendy Pines Bend, and get into that parcel.
Good to know. Thank you.
I mean, feel free, just please do the speed limit, because everybody decides it's 35 through their 40. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Our last speaker in opposition is Craig McManus. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Craig McManus. I am a homeowner in the Pine Ridge neighborhood. First of all, concerning the conditional use permit for Grace Bible Church to build and operate a satellite campus on the rear 14.6 acres, I have no objections to these. I feel that a church is the best use for it, and I welcome them to our neighborhood. My concerns are with the remaining 6.3 acres fronting London Bridge Road and the request to change the zoning from AG2 to B2. As the staff report shows, the target property is bordered on three sides by Pine Ridge and the White Pine neighborhoods, but also in the immediate vicinity along London Bridge Road are the neighborhoods of Castleton, Prince George Estates, Mayberry, Middle Oaks Plantation, Hunt Club, and Strawbridge. As you can see, the subject property of 6.3 acres is surrounded by hundreds of acres of residential property. These neighborhoods are serviced by B2 shopping districts, Strawbridge Shopping Center, Red Mill Commons, Redwell Walk, the undeveloped Hickman Plantation shops, as well as other smaller shops, strip malls, and offices anywhere from three quarters of a mile to a mile and a half from the Fox Ridge Farm property. Grace Bible Church held a neighborhood meeting last week where they expressed their desire to be good neighbors, their commitment to ensuring that the businesses going on the furnished property would be appropriate to the neighborhood, and as Pastor Matt said, this is our front door. I appreciate his and the church's desires, but unless they actually develop and lease the land, once they sell it, they lose the ability to be in full control of what goes on that land. And from what we were told at the meeting, that church needs to sell the land to free up funds to build. The purpose of the B2 business district is the, have, that the businesses will be geographically centered, such as the Red Mill Shopping Centers and such that we have. The B1, B1A are to be located near or adjacent to residential development without adversely impacting the adjacent residential areas. I understand the application for the zoning change does include some proffers restricting certain uses normally allowed within the B2 zoning. However, do they go far enough to protect the front door of the church, the feel of our community, and the value of the adjacent properties? My junior high shop teacher and mentor, Mr. Jim Cook, always told me, use the right tool for the job. Our city code is your toolbox, and B1, B1A is the right zoning for this job. It is my request that the application be modified to rezone the 6.3 acres as B1 or B1A. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
We have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
So in your letter, you had stated that your, your true desire was for there to not be a rezoning. And, and I understand you now to be saying that you would be okay with a rezoning as long as it's a downzoning, as long as we're taking it down from B2.
As long as it is down, I mean, B1 is already on London Bridge Road with the shops down at the Dam Neck end of that section, but the, there's so much commercial development already just right around the corner, very close in proximity.
Yes. Ron?
Let me ask you another question. Would you be willing to meet with the applicant and, and decide, well, would you all be willing to offer up any undesirable uses to be excluded versus downzoning to the B1A?
I'd be glad to look at it and talk with them, but I don't see, I mean, that's what B1, B1A is already putting those restrictions on. I don't see, I mean...
The question is, would you, would you or would you not?
Yeah. I mean, we can talk, but...
Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? Great. Thank you very much.
There are no more speakers.
All right. Mr. Burdon?
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. I'm going to start with something that's not rebuttal, because I forgot the sign, the church's sign. Church's sign needs to be 10 feet in height because it's only 36 square feet for signs, sign face, because that's the ag requirement. The commercial signs are all at eight feet in height, but they're 75-foot sign face. The church's sign won't be able to be seen if it's not a little bit higher, and the church is going to be back way off the road. So just, that's why we're, we would rather have this church's sign. You've got an elevation for it. It's nice, very attractive, not gaudy at all. We would like that to be 10 feet in height, simply because it's such a small sign. All right. Appreciate all the comments. The safety first, as far as the turn lanes and the need for turn lanes, right only on London Bridge Road. I would note that the, the deadly accidents have been on the opposite side of the road where the, where the, the curve is actually worse, and we're not on the opposite side of the road. But we absolutely agree that we, we need to have a full turn lane that's, that's safe, and that's, that's what I started with. So horses have been there for 38 years, excuse me, the horses have been there, they've looked at for 38 years, been there for 50 years, but it's not going to remain a horse farm. And the only other use for this property that's allowed under the, the ACU's restricted, restrictions are industrial uses. And I, I know Mr. McManus and the folks who came to the meeting all agree that that's not what they want to see this property developed, is some type of an industrial use. And churches, the value of property for churches is, is not even close to being what the value of property would be worth for housing. And that's, therein lies the, the issue, the Dr. Kozni's, you know, options, the absolute correct option in addressing Mr. McManus's thing about his shop teacher. The, the zoning ordinance is a, is a 45-year-old tool. It's broken. It's never been fixed. That's what we have conditional zoning for, is so that we can actually do things with zoning that matches the circumstances that are present today, not the circumstances that existed in the 50s and the 60s, because our ordinance was basically a rewrite of the 60s in the early 70s. And so it is, and that's why we have form-based code, and we have all kinds of other changes in the zoning for different parts of the city. And I'm not at all suggesting that this property, you know, shouldn't be looked at as what is the right use for the property, and that's what we're saying. You're also talking about it being a residential street, London Bridge Road. Well, all that residential is residential that's been there for about 15 or 50 years. It hadn't been developed since, unless they were grandfathered, because there are hundreds and hundreds of acres on London Bridge Road to the west of this property primarily, that will not have any houses built on it because they can't anymore. And they will be industrial uses. There are some that have already been built. Everyone, and I know, I'm speaking to Dr. Beersy Kozni, she wants to talk about B1. Well, there's a B1 parcel I rezoned, and the only one that's out there on the very corner of Dam Neck and London Bridge Road many years ago for a client. That piece of property is, has very, very limited utilization because it's, it has no depth, and it had upland non-tidal wetlands on it. So what's there is there, it's very small, because they couldn't have room to put any parking on it. And so that's the only piece. There are also B2, two of them, directly across the street from our farm on London Bridge Road, one with gas and convenience store. And there's B2 all at the north end, excuse me, at the east end of London Bridge Road. So this idea that London Bridge Road is like Little Neck Road or something like that, it's not, it's not going to be, and it's going to only be more industrialized over time. That doesn't mean we don't protect the neighborhoods, and we try, and that's what we're doing here. We're putting landscaping along the front, and we can certainly meet and provide, go out and take some pictures of other developments that match these guidelines, and I don't think anyone's going to suggest that they're anything other than attractive and frankly, nicer than anything else that's on London Bridge Road, that's for sure, and a lot that's on General Booth Boulevard as well. So we're not, the church doesn't want to put anything up there that isn't, you know, going to be extremely nice. Public water, public sewer, that question was asked. It's all public water, all public sewer, stormwater. We've done a plenary study. There'll be lots of BMPs on this piece of property, but we will be able to handle all the water onsite and discharge only the pre-development discharge as the law requires. We did not include tattoo parlors, but the church is more than, the church would have put tattoo parlors on there. My concern was that we have eyebrow, permanent eyebrow is called a tattoo. So I've got, I've got one coming in a couple of months. A beauty academy been, been on property for years. They want to do permanent eyebrows. They've been doing them, but nobody knew it. And they've got to get a B2 rezoning to do their permanent eyebrows. So we don't have an issue with saying no tattoos whatsoever, but, you know, that, that's the dilemma. We're trying to make sure that there are reasonable use, all reasonable uses are available for this property that are reasonable, because we are not going to be bringing in, you know, what's at Red Mill and, and Strawbridge, that's for sure. You know, they're, it's a huge commercial power center. But these will be, as I said earlier, smaller scale businesses without a doubt. But the, the idea of trying to say we need to be B1 or B1A, which doesn't allow retail, it doesn't allow this, you know, if there's a, if someone would suggest, and I've had this conversation with, with Dr. Beersy Kozni as well, if somebody says, well, you know, this piece down here at the end, which is next, next to houses, we should restrict that hours of operation, or the zoning may be B1A on that, we'd be willing to entertain that. But when you're sitting in the middle of the property, not near anyone, and the folks across the street are across a major highway, and they're well back from the road, and we're going to buffer the front of our property, it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. In our view, it's not going to impact them. The ambient noise level from all the traffic on London Bridge Road is louder than, and today, you don't hear speakers from people's drive-throughs, if we even have one on here. And, and they're at the back of the property, not on the front, so. And, and the people who are making that concern are across the street that are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet away from the front of these properties. So anyway, we, we've done, we've been over backwards, the church has been over backwards. We think this is the best solution for the property, and a lot of what you've heard today acknowledges that. Maybe not directly, but indirectly. This is the best use for this piece of property, given what has, it has been hit with, and, and I've dealt with a lot of these BRAC situations, this is probably the worst in terms of the, of the economic damage that's been put on a property owner. And this is a way to, to solve that, and the church, and we're more than willing to try to meet everyone, you know, in a, in a good place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have any questions for Eddie? Yes?
Mr. Burdon, from what you just said, so you would be willing maybe to think about rezoning the end parcels to B1A and the two parcels in the center, keep a B2?
Only the one on the east end, because the one in the, at the east end is at the, you know, is actually a budding residential. Now, we, and I've talked to a number of the people whose properties are joined there, who aren't here today, who've been very happy with what's been proposed. So I'm not, again, I'm not, not trying to say anything that these, their, their concerns aren't, you know, worth listening to and aren't legitimate, but I, I've talked to folks on that end who didn't have the same concerns. But just looking at it from a, from a land use perspective, it, and when we did the Hickman Farm, and back second time, we restricted the, the use of the buildings, in that case, the developer knew the buildings, that were adjacent to the residential. We restricted the hours of operation, and we put restrictions on what could go in them. It was all B2. But again, we use the tools that we have with conditional rezoning to, to fit the circumstances. So it, to me, it makes more sense to just do B2 and say what can't go where it shouldn't go.
Now, now I'm saying that, would you be willing to just put drive-throughs on here? No drive-throughs?
No. No. We were, because we'd certainly do that on the, on the end piece, yes, the one that's adjacent to residential, but the ones, and, and the one at the, the east end isn't, you know, we've got a huge buffer with all the, the tree wetlands that buffer everything on the Pine Ridge side. So we, we don't see that as being, and you, we don't know what types of uses coming forward in the next, you know, five, 10 years, because new businesses start all the time. And we're trying to give the church the option to have uses that will be good for the community, not just good for the, you know, the economic bottom line of being able to afford to buy the property. And, and that's, you know, I, I don't know any, any other way to put it. The church is not trying to put anything out there that, and won't put anything out there that's going to be detrimental to their, you know, mission and their property. But that, there are lots of, lots of, you know, developments with drive, you know, drive-throughs that are very, you know, easy on the eye and don't cause anybody any problems. So, but the, the one at the east end, I certainly would be respectful, and frankly, it's not the folks there that are asking for it, but I would be respectful that that's a property that we might want to put further restrictions on. And I've always said, tell us what uses in B2 don't make sense for this property. And that's what's on that list. And again, tattooing, we, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Beersy Kozni about, you know, why it's not on there, but we're more than willing to put it on there, but I wanted to be able to, people understand why I didn't put it on there. It's not because the church, the last thing the church wants is a place out there that's doing tattoos. And, and I don't, you know, I, I've evolved, like all of us have evolved now, it's allowed, you know, all over the place, but we, the church is not looking for tattoos there. And we'll put that in there, but that was the reason why it's not in there now, the eyebrows, and any kind of beauty shot.
Just to clarify real quick, what you're calling the east property is parcel E, correct?
Yes, it is. Parcel E. Parcel E. Yes, yes. Because this, this parcel, there's, this is all P1 open space over here, this is all, you know, wooded, I mean, this piece is not in any way, shape, or form impacting anybody in Pine Ridge. Now, you know, and there's O, an O1 parcel, I believe, across the street, but it, it was a house, but they're all on five acre or larger formats that were done, you know, 40 years ago, that can't be anything but that now, that they're all back from the road, most of them.
Refresh my memory, what, what kind of landscaping is planned for the street on London Bridge?
Well, we, we've put the, the material in here, and we've shown, you know, trees and shrubs, you know, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it'd be very attractive, it's all listed there. But, but I will say this also, and I've talked to Rick Lomina, talked briefly with Heather Hardle with Traffic Engineering, one of the things that, when this whole thing is reviewed and we figure out whether it's two entrances or three, and again, it may very well be two, and where they're placed, there may be, they will, there may be some need to move where those entrances are, because the idea is to create internal circulation. And it, and it may well be that this entrance has to move further this way, which then it gets closer to the houses, which we're trying to keep it from getting close to the houses. But regardless, these, this may need to be somewhat changed to make sure that it doesn't create any, you know, line of sight problems for people that are exiting the, the property. So this is what we're showing conceptually, but it may be that, you know, it's some low level, and the trees are a little bit further back, so it doesn't create a block of, of view for someone who's leaving, or wherever the entrance, this entrance is going to be here regardless. It's just a question of whether, you know, we have the other two, or we only have one, and whether that one's at the east end, or, excuse me, the east end or the west end. But the, it'll be a complete, consistent, and very attractive, beautiful landscape, you know, that is the same across the entire property, with trees and low-level landscaping. But it may, again, the configuration may change based on the, the placement of the turn lanes, and to make sure that there is no impairment of the visibility, looking, looking to the west, because all the traffic coming this way is coming eastbound, where the curve is after us, not before, what was being spoken of. What was being spoken of earlier is on the opposite side where, you know, you got a straight stretch and you got a curve, that curve is in this area. The visibility coming this way is pretty consistent, you know, and that's, but we did, we did think it was best not to have this entrance down here where the curve is beginning so the tra, traffic along here will see everything. We didn't really wanna place it down here because of the homes primarily, but also because of the curve. But the point, the point is we can deal with the entrances. That's, that's a, that's something that we'll deal with, with staff and it may, it may very well be two before all is said and done, but we can do three and meet all the safety criteria of the full 300.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, Eddie, I have a question for you.
Sure.
It seems to me, or from what I heard from everybody, that the, one of the main concerns for that retail space is drive-throughs. Likely so. So I'm trying to figure out how, you know, there's a way, is there a limit to how many drive-throughs?
That's an idea.
I would hate to see a, a Starbucks on one, a taco, because really, you know, when you, when you, when you look at the church, and I know you, you know, you're gonna say, well, that's not realistic, but, but, but a church as, a non-denominational church of that size, those people gotta eat. And that's a, that's a drawing card for, for drive, for drive-throughs. I mean, you know, or a Kelly's.
That's, that's something that, that's a discussion, that's a discussion. But let, let, and I didn't get, I didn't, what, what we're, because realize, none of, none of these are gonna have their own entrances. All the entrances are gonna come off of, you know, off the internal roads.
Right.
And that's, that's one thing that I think people have in their minds' eye when they think about what they see with drive-throughs. And so the entrances are gonna be off of the Ring Road and the, the drive-through situation, because we gotta be out here, the drive-throughs are gonna be in this area, you're gonna loop all the way around. But, but I'm not discounting what you're asking, okay? I do think that that is a, that it does a possibility that we can look at having no more than, you know, two drive-throughs or something along those lines. I think that's.
That's, that's a, that's a true concern with the neighborhood and, and you and I knowing, living in a neighborhood, that's not an ideal situation.
Well, if, if I, if I weren't so far from them, that, that's why I said I agree with you.
Well, one on parcel.
Yeah, this one, I, this one, I've, and I've, I mentioned this to, to Dr. Beersy Quasny when we spoke earlier about, you know, we would be willing to discuss limitations on that because of the proximity, but with, you know, we, we certainly would have no problem and understand also that you may have a situation where you've got a, a little, you know, small strip type, type center that you've got a coffee shop or something that has a small drive-through, not, not like what we're thinking about Taco Bell and things like that.
Right.
So, and our, or even a financial institution, although we're not building too many of those these days, you know, that have, have, obviously have drive-throughs. So it's not just fast food restaurants, but that's certainly one, but we, answers, yes, we can certainly look at trying to limit the number.
The hours of a drive-through.
Yes.
You know, was, was, was a concern and so I think that that might be a discussion.
That's, that's an area that we can certainly.
That would be nice to have.
Yes, I agree.
With them.
Totally agree. Totally agree with that.
Okay.
We can, and we can have that, that conversation, we can certainly have it between now and council or, you know, depending upon how you all wanna handle it, we can have that conversation before this body takes a vote, but that's up to you guys. But we're not gonna solve the entrance situation, but we're, we're not sitting here telling you, you're approving three entrances. We know, we totally understand that.
Right.
Totally understand that, but we're stuck with the one in the middle, not that.
Right, because of the median.
And that, that creates some conflict, some, some problems with trying to figure out how to best do it.
But I think that, from what I heard, and, and I think that everybody will agree to me, was that, that they were concerned about, you know, if maybe that everybody could get together and maybe have a conversation of, of what was appropriate against the neighborhood and for that B2, I think that would probably go a long way.
I, I totally agree. And we're, we're happy to do that.
Jeff?
To sum this up, sort of, you're saying that you're willing to take parcel E and rezone that to B1A.
That's, we, we have no objection to doing it that way. Again, if, if somebody wants to do a yoga studio there, why is that a problem? I mean, that, that's kinda, I'm, I'm almost like, we're probably.
Okay, or how about this? How about you exclude a drive.
Right. Exclude more things from that is, I think the better way to do it.
Okay, 'cause I agree, there's some things that are on B2. When I went through the list, that makes sense to be there, that.
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I could say, yes, do B1A, but I really think we're better off to add additional restrictions to that property than, than to just say.
So if you added additional restriction to parcel E that said there would be no drive-in type restaurant.
And close by 11 o'clock or something like that, whatever.
And you'd be willing to limit the other three parcels, I think you said, to two possible restaurants, so Chick-fil-A or Taco Bell or something. And then the number of entrances is going to be controlled, when it goes through, by staff.
Yeah, and it, it, and one, one, everyone, I think everyone, well, everyone staff-wise agrees that one won't, won't be very, won't be a good situation at all. So it's the question of two or three and how you, and how you configure them, to make them the safest possible.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good, great. So that's it?
That's it.
For everybody? All right, well then, now we're gonna close this to the public hearing and open it up for discussions. And before we do that, I just wanna explain that our chairman had to step away due to his, a business affiliation with this application, so he is not a part of this discussion or voting for it at this time.
So you're in charge? You're in charge?
I'm in charge. So, all right, so we'll open it up for everybody to, anybody have any comments? Conversation? Yes, Commissioner Quasny.
So first of all, I think that the number of entrances needs to be established at two, which is master, which is transportation's recommendation, and we haven't talked about that yet, not thoroughly. So I wondered if anyone had any thoughts on that? Because that was the recommendation in the staff report, correct?
I, they, I think what I did read too was that they said it should not be three entrances based on the amount of distances that you would have between the entrances and that they recommended two for this. Now, when they, when they say recommend, I don't know, I mean, they, they can enforce that, they can't do, so if they do, they look at this and they go, yeah, there's no way that this is a safe environment to put three entrances, we're only gonna allow you two, they can control that.
Not necessarily.
No, okay, all right. Okay, so that, answer that question.
So would that be for us to control and working with Mr. Burdon in this moment?
Yes.
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 All right. So, so before we bring him back up again, what I would also like to say is that I, that drive-through restaurants on that stretch of London Bridge Road is just something that I feel strongly should not happen there. General Booth is right down the street, that's an appropriate spot for drive-through restaurants, whether they're in, whether they're behind or not. I, I feel strongly about that and I would love to see that. If B2 is going to be the zoning that's, that's preferred, then that list of exclusions needs to be extended to include drive-through restaurants, tattoo parlors, those things that those in the neighborhood would like to see excluded so that what comes across the street for them is amenable to their neighborhood and what becomes adjacent to their properties is amenable. I think that makes a lot of sense. If, it, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a win-win for both. They get B2, but the community gets the exclusions that they feel are gonna change the quality of life for them. That's my, that's my feeling.
All right. Yes, Ron?
Madam Chairman, we, at, at the Central Business District, had a big deal discussion about drive-throughs. And they were hidden and they were to the back. So I think if you could, if they'd be willing to do that, something along those lines, maybe you wanna limit the number if that's the case, but, you know, the drive-throughs, as Don mentioned, they're drugstore drive-throughs, there's more than just, you know, drive-throughs for fast food places. So if you could limit it to the back, I think, and do it along the lines of what they did at the Central Business District, that seemed, that seems to work.
I may be the Lone Ranger here, I don't know, but I mean, this has been a, a very interesting, I think, complex, unusual, unique application, which has a lot of moving parts and that need to be worked out. And I'm, I'm in favor of a deferral for 30 days to figure out some of the, you know, limits on, on uses and all that. I mean, I don't know how we could sit here and figure out.
I would support that also.
Yeah, so do we wanna make a motion to go in that motion?
I'll make a motion to defer.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So what, you wanna defer it for 30 days and you wanna, you wanna specify what you're looking for to come back? The uses, the drive-throughs?
I would like to see.
So they're real clear?
Some finality on entrances and uses, the list to be excluded and that, from what I've seen, that's two things I can think of and maybe others can think of other things.
And possibly limit the number of drive-throughs, maybe?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I felt that's under uses and types of uses.
Now, the, the, Madam Chairman, if I may speak, you know, the, the plan has done, I think it's done a very good job of, of buffering even from the, from the road and all. And, you know, I don't have a problem with the deferral, maybe they come and, come through with a few more things that, that people can agree on. But, you know, we talked about, this is in a community of so many homes around it, you know, the big thing here is that these people didn't develop their property many, many years ago. If they had, they, you know, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here talking about this today, it would be houses, it would be your neighbors still, you know, so. So now we're trying, we've had things to come in and have dictated that they can't develop their property in residential now, which would've been the highest and best use. And now we got to come up with the highest and best use for the, so these people can get their, their property sold. And that's the reason, you know, I'm a little bit more compassionate to, to help, help people out in situations like that where, you know, if we can make it work so that they can, can better make out with this property because they, they were the ones that didn't give in early on and have held on, so I'm, I, I will go along with the, with the deferral, but like you said, I want to, want to be sure that we're thinking, but that we're still giving them the highest and best use opportunities with their property.
Can I say one more thing, Dee?
Sure. I think, I think Don makes a good point and I think that what we need to do with something like that when we're trying to figure out how to make the highest and best use for the property owner who's been under duress, not of any cause of their own, a balance between making sure they get that and the communities nearby also continue to achieve the quality of life that they've become accustomed to and bought into. So there must be a happy medium and I don't think we've reached that point yet. And so Mike's idea of a deferral makes perfect sense so that those two elements can be addressed.
Okay, great. All right, then we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Edman for a deferral, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I second it.
And second it by Commissioner Quasny.
The only other question is, Mr. Burdon, clear on what we think we want to have come forth before next month?
I, I believe so. I would just caution everyone that the, the exact placement of any entrance other than the one where the median break is, is not going to get resolved and figured out in the next 10 days because my proffers have to be in 21 days before next month's hearing and we can't afford any more deferral. This is the only deferral we can afford in the contract. So I, I, again, I don't, I disagree completely with, with the plan director. If this commission says, we're approving the use, but we're not approving the entrances as they are shown, because that's probably what it's gonna be, we're not gonna have, there's no way we're gonna have all the buy-in from city staff on full turn lanes and where they should be. And we're.
I didn't say public work.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I, my, my whole, my point is, I've, I think I've made it pretty clear, we want three, we'll, you know, if, if two is all that can safely be placed on the property, then that's all we will have. But the safe placement takes priority over all of this and we're not in a position at this beginning of the, of the game to figure out exactly the safe placement of that second entrance if that's all we're gonna have. And that's my only caveat, but everything else.
I think we, I think we understand that.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. I think we're.
Close open.
Okay, we're almost there.
Okay.
All right, our last item, I believe, let me just double check, yes, our last item on the agenda is item number 13, an application of Princess Anne Estate Trust and Virginia Beach Financial Center for a discontinuance, closure and abandonment of a property of Lord Dunmore Drive approximately 200 feet in length between Princess Anne Road and relocated Lord Dunmore Drive District 2 Kimsville. Is the applicant here?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Ned Halloran, I am the applicant. These two business organizations are owned by me. The street closure we're speaking of has physically occurred six years ago. My, you have the, I practice, I'm an attorney, I practice law out of a carriage house or a little red building here. I moved the manor house, which used to be here in the Princess Anne Road, to this location. And what we're talking about is the road closure of what's left of the old Lord Dunmore. Presently, it's being used as access and parking for my law office. And to my friends in Fairfield who may be here today, this will not affect whatsoever the traffic patterns on Lord Dunmore. Once this is formally abandoned and closed, I'll be able to finish the parking lot, get moved into the manor house and make it look a lot more presentable than it is now. So I'm open to questions if we have any.
Any questions of Mr. Halloran? Thank you. There appears to be three speakers. It's kinda interesting, I came back and both people left the room, so I'm kinda wondering if they, or would rather me be gone, but anyway. But they both had reasons. Anyway, first speaker in opposition to this is Bob Laramore. Would you please come forward, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Board. When we saw the red sign, oh, I'm sorry, Bob Laramore, 5568 Normandy Avenue, Avalon Terrace area.
Thank you.
We've been longtime members at Emmanuel Episcopal Church since 1969 and when we saw this red sign about street closure, my wife and I did not realize what that meant. And we were afraid that maybe that whole Lord Dunmore was gonna come to a dead end and not feed into Princess Anne Road as it now is. Because Lord Dunmore has always fed into Princess Anne Road as long back as we can remember, when Fairfield was discovered or started to be built. So we were alarmed about what that sign meant and that's why we're here. We're not opposed to what this gentleman wants to do because we understand how he had to move his building when the widened road or the expanded road came behind the church. We were deeply involved with that, with the city council and planning and whomever about the church property, which we gave up through eminent domain for that Princess Anne Road as we now understand it as it is. So we're, we've been here for four hours, it's been interesting listening. I haven't been to one of these in a long time and I'm very much at ease with what's happening and now I understand why the Fairfield Civic League's not here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. W.T. Flanagan.
My name is William Flanagan. I live at 5259 Jacob Court, which is a stone's throw from what I thought was gonna be the closure of Lord Dunmore, as the last gentleman spoke. Since it isn't that and it's only gonna be the area at the lawyer's office, I have no, no complaints at all.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker is. And the last speaker is Teresa Kaiser.
I just retired from teaching and my time's valuable.
We didn't want you to sit there four hours either.
I'm Teresa Kaiser. And my biggest reason for coming here today was my parents are in their 80s. They live at the north end. There are 100 houses at the north end. I was afraid you were going to close off access, which would affect emergency vehicles. I want to make sure that's not the case. And what this gentleman said is that we're still going to be able to get out to Princess Anne Road. My only suggestion is put stop signs at both of those two streets where the apartments are coming out so that you can stop some of that congestion.
Bob? David?
For y'all that haven't come and spoke today, sorry you've been here for four hours, but you really need to get with Fairfield Civic League because there is a petition coming out to close that road. It's been coming out for a while now, okay? And so, be part of the Civic League. Join, get there. I know your parents live in the neighborhood. Voice your opinion. This is the time to do it right now.
It's a little hard for them, it's hard on them today, but I'll do it for them.
Just think about that.
All right, thank you.
It's out there to be closed, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. Stephen, you left us a note. Is this apropos or do we need?
Proceed.
Proceed. I'm not sure, I need for you to proceed because I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with it. Just forget this or carry on? Forget it and carry on? Okay. Close the public hearing and open it up for comments amongst the commissioners. David?
Motion to approve.
After, after listening to everybody, I'll second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Ripley and seconded by Mr. Weiner.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Ripley. And seconded by Mr. Weiner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to disclose, I do own property across the street, but I have no financial interest in this property at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there, is there any further business that we need to conduct, Barry? If not, meeting adjourned.